This morning, good grief, I phoned IT, something come up and I'd never seen it before. And I thought, well, I better phone IT and let them know. So I phoned IT and Chris at IT says, I've never seen that before. Something comes up and I'd never seen it before. Yeah, so anyway, got it sorted out. It must have took him half an hour to get it all sorted out. I couldn't get any emails, nothing. Nothing. You know, I mean, there was having trouble at Brockstowe the other day. Some of them were getting on.
Evening. Are we ready to start? Because it's gone seven o'clock. If that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, when you're ready, yeah.
All right, hang on. Hopefully Virgin's sorted my bandwidth up and we'll see how we go, won't we? All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Richard.
Okay, we've all seen the bit at the top where it says councillors are reminded to turn off their cameras and mute the microphones on commencement as the meeting. If you can all do that and then use your, if you can use the chat facility or the hand thing, because I know some different versions of teams don't have the hands thing on it. Just use the chat thing. And I'll apologise now for doing this. Anyone out, just shout out and remind me. But I will try and keep an eye on it, as will the town clerk. And I think the easiest way is when anything that goes to a vote, if we get the town clerk to call the names out. We'll probably get the meeting done quicker than me doing it.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Oh, I best unplug that. That was Google. I don't know why it did that. We don't want that put in anyway. Anyway, so yeah, we'll start the meeting. So good evening, everybody. Just before we go to item one on the agenda, I've got an announcement to make. I don't know if any of you know a lady called Margaret Botchrell. It was formerly Margaret Miller. From 1987 to 1991, she was a member of Stapleford Town Council and also a mayor. So some of you may remember her.
She was the first, she was the first mayor, Richard.
First mayor. Okay, so I was just going to say if you can all join me in a few moments of silence, just to pay our respects to her. I'd appreciate that. Thank you all.
Good evening, Sabrina.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So the first item on the agenda, welcome Bob for just joining us. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is to note apologies of absence. So does town clerk have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Mr Mayor. A lot of apologies from councillor Joan Briggs and councillor John McGrath.
Okay, thank you. That's appreciated. Thank you very much. So the second item on the agenda, if you see me looking over it, it's because I've got another computer with all the paperwork on it. So the second item on the agenda is to receive declarations of interest.
My hands up. Mr Mayor, my hands up. Brockstowe Borough Council and I'm on the town executive board for Stapleford as well.
Thank you.
And planning, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Darby.
Brockstowe Borough.
Okay, councillor Gould.
Brockstowe Borough Council.
Thank you. And councillor Tim Hallam.
Yes, thanks for Mr Mayor. Brockstowe and specifically later on when it goes to talk in the staffing review about economic development. Because of the close proximity that I have on the borough to the Economic Development Team there as the Chair of Jobs and Economy, I think that's worth. Over and above just being a Borough Council, that's worth declaring.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I also need to declare interest in Brockstowe Borough Council. And also, I think I need to declare an interest in item 14, where it says HS2 Totem Master Plan. Because I was actually a member of a committee that was dealing with things like that at Brockstowe Borough Council level. So just for. To be transparent and I wanted to declare an interest in that as well. Thank you. Can you also make sure you put your hands down and when you've done that as well? Because it makes it a little bit easier to see who's put them back up again afterwards. Thank you. Okay, so has anyone else got any declarations of interest to declare? No? Okay, so the next item on the agenda, item three, is to minutes of previous meetings. So confirming sign minutes of the following meetings as correct record. The first one was the annual meeting held on the 24th of July 2020. Oh, I've got councillor Hawkins first.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Elizabeth Fepton's trying to log in, but she can't log in. She's having difficulties getting into the meeting.
Okay. I don't know if that's something the town clerk can help with.
I can send her another link if that helps. I don't, let me send her another link.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And councillor, oh, hang on. Just to cancel, councillor Kearney and then councillor Gould, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if the town clerk wouldn't mind just making a slight amendment to item 41. Which of the annual town meeting agenda, which was to do with the grant funding for the Helpful Bureau. I just, she's noted that I abstained, but I just wonder if, would she mind please just adding in that I did declare an interest at that point? Because I've been assisting the charity with the funding applications, which is why I abstained. But I just would like it noting that I did declare an interest there, please.
Yeah, no, no, you did. I think we both did on that one, didn't we? I can remember you doing it, yeah.
Yeah, we did. Thank you.
Is that not at the front of the minutes? Sorry, let me just get them open. I thought I'd put that on already.
I didn't, I didn't see it on the front of the minutes.
Oh, no. Okay, yeah, no, sorry. I can do that.
Okay, and did councillor Gould have a hand up for that one as well? Okay, so are we all in agreement that they're true set with the amendment?
Yeah, do you want to second in?
Please.
Okay, I'll second that.
Not appreciate that. And to the town clerk, do you need to take a vote on that one or?
You can just do it by assent if you wish. We don't need to take a detailed vote.
Okay, so if anyone wants to object, please let us know now. And if anyone wants to abstain, please let us know now. Okay, that was an easy one. Right. And then the next one is, let's scroll back up again. The minutes from the meeting on the 4th of September 2020. Again, has anyone got any comments or concerns to raise on that one? As councillor Kearney, have you got your hand up again for that one?
I have, yeah. Sorry, I'm being a pain.
Go on, just okay.
It's on item 56. Just for clarity, can we just note in the minutes that it was the Finance and General Purposes Committee? That we appointed councillor Needham to. At the minute, I think it just says the committee.
Okay, and is that okay, Sabrina, to do that?
Yeah, just do that on the, yeah.
Okay, so same as before. Does anyone want a second though?
I'll do that for you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Needham. And we'll do the same as before. So does anyone have any objections? Or does anyone want to abstain? Okay, but thank you for that. So the next item on the agenda is item four, which is minutes of committees and advisory committees. And this is to note the minutes and approve the recommendations contained here in. And I think there's a few little noting things on here. So A is Arts Events and Heritage Committee, 11th of September 2020. And I think in a few seconds, the town clerk wants to give a bit of an update. So we're going to be talking about Remembrance Sunday, alternative arrangements. Obviously, it is sad that it is what it is at the minute. And it doesn't look like, you know, we can't have lots of people going to lots of events, which is really sad, because I'm sure we all enjoy, well, I'm not saying enjoy, we all. Turn up to commemorate these events. And I think it's sad that, you know, we can't have the whole town there. And as Simon said previously, you know, let's make next year better. But I am actually looking forward to being able to put a wreath down as the mayor. I just wish that it could be different to how it perhaps will be, do you know what I mean? But it is what it is. So I think I'll hand over to Sabrina for this one. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is something that I really need council to sort of make a decision on ideally. The Arts Events and Heritage Committee did discuss alternative arrangements and with the recent sort of extra precautions that have been put in place. It sort of gives us the impetus to make sure that we don't actually run an event like we were looking to do before. I know we said, oh, let's not do the parade because we knew we couldn't do that. But looking at the guidance and what other people are doing. Ideally, we don't want to be running any kind of event on the square because it could attract a crowd. And we don't have the facilities or the manpower to try and to manage that if that were to happen. So what we're looking at doing is some alternative things online and encouraging people to do things like the doorstep silence and that kind of thing. But we do have also two invites for the mayor to attend the Combined Services Events. They seem to want to do an event on the Sunday. And they want to do, they normally do a thing on the 11th as well, and they have invited the mayor. So I'm. I think I'm of the opinion that we shouldn't be encouraging events that will potentially draw a crowd. But I think it's something that council needs to discuss and decide whether or not we allow the mayor to go. I've not seen any risk assessments at all. And they will need to submit those to the borough if they are going to run an event. But it needs to be council that thinks about what they want to do.
Okay, so thank you for that. So are we, so that's noting the minutes of that, isn't it? So the next thing then is Finance and General Purpose Committee, which was the 18th of September.
Well, sorry, sorry. I think council needs to debate that. There are some people with their hands up as well, and we need to make a decision as to what we're going to do.
Okay, no worries. That's not a problem. So sorry, I missed the order of the names. Go on, let me look on it. I can see councillor Frost's name first. So we'll start with councillor Frost, please.
Okay, firstly, I think as long as we get the risk assessments and things done. Then that answers one question. However, I do agree with Sabrina on this one. We can't encourage them to go ahead. We're all trying our best to stick by these new rules. And I think from my own point of view, that we shouldn't encourage this. But we can do something online. We can do the minute silence on the step and make next year better than this year. That's my own personal point of view. And I just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next name I can see, it looks like councillor Kearney and then councillor Hallam and then councillor Gould. And then if you can put your hands down, some others might pop up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got, I've got two, two things that I want to express on this. One, I'm fully supportive of the sort of the online stuff and encouraging people to do the doorstep, the doorstep silence. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that it's right to exclude the mayor from going. I think from my point of view, if we should leave it down to the mayor, I think it should be the mayor's prerogative whether he feels that he wants to go and do this or not. I do wonder though if there might be some way of the mayor himself maybe putting out a video beforehand on the Facebook page to be shared on social media. Just to say that, you know, we do want to, we do want to honour the fallen and this is an important event for us. But we do also want you to stay at home and respect the fact that at the moment, although you do want to remember that this is, this is a dangerous time for us to be gathering together in crowds. So that's, that's my opinion on that particular item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it was councillor Hallam next. And councillor Frost, can you put your hand down, please? Because the other ones aren't popping up. It only lets me see so many at a time. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I agree with a lot that, a lot of what's been said and most especially with what councillor Kearney just suggested. I feel that it's right and proper for the mayor to lay a wreath in the proper place at the proper time. The, the way to, I think, to discourage people from turning up in person is to predefine it as an online event. In the same way that I've been doing a lot of live streaming on Facebook recently, you can set a, you can set a scheduled, pre-announced live stream. And so which comes up with a countdown as to when it starts and everything. So that way, it might actually entice people to stay at home, to stay on their computers. Rather and, and watch that that's going on live, but from the safety of their own home. The borough guidance on this, I believe, is just saying the same as, the same as it is any other day, really, rule of, rule of six. And, and don't attract a crowd. So if we didn't, if we discourage people from turning up to the square. And we encouraged people to participate in, for example, a Facebook Live event. Then it would only take minimum of two people to do that, one being the mayor and another person with a, with a camera setup ready to livestream.
Thank you. Councillor, I think it was councillor Gould next.
Yes, I think in the circumstances. We should be either holding a media event or personally, my intention is to show my respect on the doorstep. And hopefully the neighbours along here, I'm sure, will also come out and show their respect. It's very important in this sort of thing. And it's very close to my heart because I am an ex-service man's. I'm not an ex-service man's wife. I'm still his wife, but I am ex-services. And I feel that we should. Try as hard as we can to show our respect in one way or another. But in these very uncertain times, I think it's, it's wrong of us to. Think about gathering anywhere or encouraging other people to gather. And I'm not sure about the legality of that either with people coming out all the time. So I'm very much in agreement with the other councillors that have spoken.
Thank you. Councillor Needham and then councillor Grindle, please.
Hello. Yeah, just a couple of things really. Firstly, obviously, I'm understanding what Ella's saying and I'm completely in agreement that, yes, okay. I think it is right that the mayor should go, but I do think we need to see a risk assessment. Because I do understand that the Combined Services, the people who've made the request, I don't know what they've got planned, but obviously. If they are going to be there as well, we need to make sure that, you know, for your safety, Chair, that we're not putting you at risk. Because we have a duty of care to you as well to not just send you off and put you into a risky situation. Yeah, so, yeah, so obviously, you know, I think we need to communicate with the Combined Services and see if that's been put in place for you. And the other thing is, I've actually managed to get in touch with Peter Huckstable. And he has agreed to do a video online, a short thing of like a few choice words and prayers and things. So obviously, because he's not doing the service this year and that can go up on the, our Facebook page and social media. So that's another angle on it. So we can get a bit of sort of run up to the event and actually some stuff on the day as well on, online. So that, that's something that we're actually looking into as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it was councillor Grindle next.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will say that I have a declaration of interest here first because I'm a member of Stapleford Combined Services. Regarding people watching at home on TV, that's fine. People going to their front doors is absolutely an idea. I think regarding the people of Combined Services, I think it's more that. The younger ones who are still in the forces. And those who have just come out who have lost. Their friends, their colleagues in service, in the service. Find it very hard to not be able to turn up and lay a wreath. I can understand that. And yeah, the risk assessments is there, fine. Obviously, we don't want to encourage too many people to come. It must only be six there around the memorial. And that's, that's the way I see it. Regarding the mayor's attendance, he has been asked to attend. And as long as the mayor's quite happy to attend, then we're happy to see him. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I think. As we mentioned in the Combined Services as well, I best, I'll declare an interest because I am obviously a honorary member of the Combined Services as well. I don't know if that makes any difference, but I just wanted to say that. It looks like councillor Darby.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As regards laying the wreaths, I understand that from the Women's Institute and myself, of course, because I want a wreath laying. There's going to be one person laying the wreaths. And, and I think that's it. Am I correct in that?
Was you asking me the question, councillor Darby?
Yes, yeah, well, yes.
I mean, I saw the stuff that Brockstowe sent out that said like, obviously, they don't want loads of people turning up. It's not that they don't want loads of people turning up. We can't have loads of people turning up. None of us can. It's like I said, let's do that next year. But this year, we've got to be very careful. It did say in there that people, others can put the wreaths down, but obviously they've got to do it at different times. But again, I suppose that's down to individual groups to organise with their own groups. And as long as they've got risk assessments and kind of they're having this conversation that we're having. I think that's the right thing to say. But if you've not seen it, I'm sure it can be emailed across to you if it would help you, that information.
If you would, yeah, that'd be great. Yes.
I'm sure if the town clerk's got a copy of that, she could perhaps send it to all councillors, just in case they haven't seen it.
Yeah, because I've got to get back to the Women's Institute and tell them, you see, so.
Yeah, no, no. Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Darby. And it looks like councillor Patterson's next, please.
Hi. Yeah, I think where the confusion's coming from about laying the wreaths is at the Events Committee. We did suggest that one person could lay all the wreaths. That was before the new regulations have actually come in. So obviously, everything is moving quickly. So it's trying to keep up with the information we get. So I think that was the initial idea to have wreaths raised by one person and the card read out by said person. But obviously, everything's changed again.
And it could change again, couldn't it?
Who knows?
I mean, hopefully it doesn't. So let's have a look. I think everyone's had a say on that one. So if you go over to the town clerk and see what she'd like us to do next. Thank you. Thank you for everyone's input as well.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I think general consensus is that if we can get a risk assessment and you're happy to attend, then you can go to the Combined Services thing. I think probably the best thing to do is to do the online stuff that we've already discussed. And the Events Committee Chair and Vice Chair can help me with that, sorting out what we're going to do. And then in terms of other groups laying the wreaths, I think probably the best thing I can do is write to everybody. And just let them know that they can lay it themselves, but perhaps not at 11 o'clock, just to sort of choose a different time and sort themselves out to go and do it in their own time. Rather than everybody trying to congregate at 11 o'clock to do it on the square at the same time. So if council's happy for me to sort of progress on that, in that vein, then we can move on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Can I, can I also, if this is the right thing to do, because I think it was their idea. If, and tell me now if you don't want to, but if you do, then brilliant. Can I ask that if councillor Kearney and councillor Patterson wanted to, that one of them mentioned doing a live video? I think that was councillor Kearney. Sorry, not a live video, like a pre-recorded one. But I also know that councillor Patterson's pretty handy with a camera. If that's something they wanted to do to help, you know, to help me with, I'm more than happy to, I'm sure we can all social distance. Them cameras have got good lenses on, as long as you get me good side. I think that would be a really good idea. And I'm more than happy to do that if the two councillors, it's something they'd like to do. I think it's a good idea.
I'm more than happy to come and video it and add the subtitles and things. So yes, more than happy.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So is that resolved, that one? And we're moving on to the next bit now?
Yes, I'm fine with that, Chair, if everybody else is.
Okay, right. No, thank you. That was, that was nice. Thank you, everybody. And next year, let's make it bigger and better. So the next one is Finance and General Purposes Committee. And then it's got a little thing on there. So I'm taking it, we're going back to the town clerk for the scheme of delegation recommendation to approve.
Yes, Chair, it's just because it needs to be on the agenda. It's not just, we're not just allowed to leave it in the minute. So this is the delegation scheme that came to council initially. Then it went to the Finance and General Purposes Committee for further detailed scrutiny. And the recommendation from them was to approve. So it's up to council if they wish to do so. I didn't send it out again because you've already had it and nothing has changed in it. It's exactly the same. But just to make council aware, one of the things that was sort of made clear in the Finance Meeting. Is that council can withdraw delegations at any time if it's concerned that something's not happening as it wants to be, it wants to be, it to be happening. Then we can go through a process of withdrawing those delegations at any point.
Okay, and does anyone want to, have anything, I think raise hands still up from last time. Does anyone have any comments or concerns they'd like to raise on that? And I know it's just a noted thing, but okay, councillor Grindle, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with what the town clerk's just said. Because it does make things easy, easier. Because everything on there might not come to approval. So we'll just have to wait and see. But she's quite right in what she says.
Okay, and who can argue with councillor Grindle? Anyone else? Or are we all moving on with that one? Councillor Darby, your hands up. Is that to talk on this one? Or is that still from before me? Oh, it seems to have disappeared a little bit. Okay, thank you for that. No, no, it's okay. So the next one, are we okay to move on from that then?
I just want to make it clear that we are, we are approving it. If you want to do a proper vote, then we can do. But I just want to make it clear that this needs to either be approved or not. So if you want to do it by exception, that's fine. Or we can do a proper vote. It's up to you.
Okay, well, let's do it by exception and then we might get to the chip shop before 10 o'clock. As long as everybody's okay with that. And I suppose if anyone can, oh, sorry, councillor Grindle.
I like a recorded vote on this one, please, Chair. Thank you.
You'd like a recorded vote. Okay, it looks like a proper vote then, Sabrina, if that's okay with you. You do that bit.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need somebody to move a second proposal to approve the item. I'm happy to.
Can I propose or second whichever? Okay. Okay, that sounds good to me. Okay, so if the town clerk could take the vote, please.
So we've not got anyone here, have we actually? So if everybody can just say four against or abstain, please. So we've got councillor Boffinger.
Four.
Councillor Brown.
Four.
Councillor Darby.
Four.
Councillor Epp, I don't think councillor Eppson managed to get in, did she? No, sorry. Councillor Frost.
Four.
Councillor Gould.
Four.
Councillor Grindle.
Four.
Jess Hallam's not here either. Councillor Tim Hallam.
Jess Hallam is here. She's sharing her computer with me. Would you like?
Oh, is she? Sorry. Well, thank you. Tim Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Four.
Councillor Kearney.
Four.
Councillor McPhee.
Four.
Councillor Needham.
Four.
Councillor Patterson.
Four.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So we're moving on to the next bit. As you see, allotment hearing group, 21st of September 2020. There's a bit of a thing on it. It says bonfires to consider and agree the council's policy on allotment bonfires. So that's back to the town clerk again. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. This is, at the meeting, the garden holders put forward a suggestion that perhaps council could consider. Allowing bonfires over a period of time instead of trying to try and get it all done on one Saturday. Last year, we had a problem with a massive downpour and actually none of the fires could be lit for months. And so what they've suggested is that could count. And so what they've suggested is that could council consider allowing fires throughout November, December and January? And to have small fires in like the brazier type things rather than just open bonfires. Appreciating that council decided a long time ago to stop bonfires, particularly because of something that happened on Ullam Lane. But it's something they just wanted us to consider.
Okay, it looks like we've got councillor Grindle's got his hand up there.
Very much, Mr Mayor. Yeah, this has been a very, all the years I've been on the council, we've had every year come up with this problem of fires. Now, I, as the town clerk had already said, one year when it rained on the day days, that allotment people were allowed to like have their fires lit. It rained all day, not a good start. What I would suggest, because we, in the past, have had a lot of complaints from residents around the area, even though the residents around the area years ago were sent letters to warn residents that fires were being lit on a certain day. What I would like to suggest, if I may, Mr Mayor, is that have the Saturday the nearest a bonfire night, but but have an alternative Saturday, probably the Saturday after, in case the weather is inclement for the first time. I think we're going to have to be careful spreading it over November, December, January. It's just not on, as far as I'm concerned. So I would suggest, yeah, that Saturday before the bonfire night and then an alternative Saturday if the weather is inclement on the first time. I don't know how many times I've spoken on this particular subject. But Brockstow, there's no law at Brockstow that say people can't have bonfires, but the town council, in my opinion, are now using their initiative, obviously, in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. I can see councillor Boffinger next.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the idea of having bonfires at all. If it's, if it's organic materials, bits of dead, bits of plant and things, surely it would be better if we could arrange for it to be taken and composted. That'd be much, much better for the environment because the carbon dioxide, instead of being released straight back into the atmosphere, will be trapped in compost, which is then a useful thing as well for gardening. And if there's anything else in the bonfire, and I mean, who knows what else they might put in? I have no idea. I've not been there when they've been doing one. If it's bits of plastic and other things like that, that really, really, really shouldn't be set fire to. That should be, that should be disposed of in the bins or taken home and put in their bin, or if it's too big, arranged for it to be taken away from the site and taken to landfill or even better recycling. So is there, is there any particular reason why they want to have bonfires?
That, that I don't like.
Shall I come back in on that, Mr Mayor?
Please.
There's a number of reasons behind this. First of all, a lot of people don't actually have cars that come to the site, so they wouldn't be able to transport large amounts off. And there are quite a lot of, a lot of it is organic material. But they do have lots of bits of wood and other things that are on there. We did have skips this year so that they could get rid of a large amount of the rubbish. Obviously, it continues, it perpetuates, it never really goes away. But one of the things that was mentioned as well was if there are sort of diseased plants, if there's sort of like a blight on something, the best way to get rid of that is actually to burn it. And that is something that might happen in the summer. So they're sort of, they don't want to be banned from having fires the whole time. And what they were suggesting is if they had small fires over a longer period, there wouldn't be such a smog over and a nuisance to residents. And obviously, they can deal with the blight issues as well that they might have.
Okay, does that help you, Ross?
Well, I can, I can see the argument for diseased plants. But that, perhaps we could allow that to happen. There must, perhaps there's a way of allowing that to happen. But still, I understand that a lot of people might have allotments who, even if they have a car, aren't capable of getting the stuff into their car and we should, we should still be encouraging as we declared, we declared a climate emergency as stable for town council, I think before I became a councillor. So as part of doing, as part of doing that, it'd be really good if we could encourage them by arranging for it to be, to be taken away to an organisation. I mean, the, the local recycling centres, they take garden rubbish and they compost it. Maybe we could get involved in that somehow, make sure that the rubbish goes to the bits of plant and even wood. I mean, that can be recycled directly or chipped. Or it can be, it can be composted as well if it's a small enough piece.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Frost.
Hi, yes, two things. First of all, I've got councillor Eppton on the phone, Epi Eppton, Elizabeth Eppton. She's having no end of trouble. She's on loudspeaker. Can we do this so she can take part in the meeting, she says?
I think people have died.
Yes, that's fine. As long as we can hear her and she can hear us, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just going to put it on loudspeaker now so she can hear you. Yes, the second thing is I actually burn a bit of stuff myself and I turn it into, please excuse that. And it's then turned into what's called potash, which is used for the roots, et cetera, to really start and get grow bushes, et cetera. So that's what I do. But I think it is okay to let them burn. But if we also give them a chance to put into compost eventually, or even put our own compost in, then I think that'd work. That's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Councillor Grindle, I don't know if you've got your microphone turned on. Can you turn it off? It might not be you, someone has. And councillor Gould's next, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I've had an allotment for ages, I think about eight years on Ullam Lane. I have never needed to light a bonfire. I compost a lot of the, the waste or, or remove it myself. So I'm opposed to the bonfires, particularly in this day and age. So I will not be voting for this. I'm not in favour of this.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gould. And that's perhaps why your food's so nice on your allotment, because you compost everything. Councillor Patterson, next, please.
Hi. Yeah, I think over the years, rubbish has been allowed to stack up on the allotment, which has caused lots of issues. On bonfire wise, I think we should allow a longer period of time them to actually burn, just either this Saturday or that Saturday. You know, it could rain on both of those Saturdays. If you add a longer stretch, you know, at least a nine day stretch, so you've got a Saturday, Sunday all week and a Saturday and Sunday again, at the bare minimum. At least then the bonfires wouldn't be so big because everybody throws everything on up to one massive bonfire, which becomes a problem in itself. So I think we need to consider a longer period of time for people to burn rubbish. We also are looking at other ideas to get rid of rubbish, which we're going to take to the allotments committee, I think, to see what, what they think about the ideas. But they definitely need longer to get rid of the rubbish than one Saturday or one other Saturday. So that's my opinion. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And councillor Hawkins and then it's councillor Brown, please.
Oh, yeah, basically, I'm agreeing with Sue. If rubbish on allotments, a lot of it can be burnt. Disease plants, little bits of timber and twigs you've used for holding up plants through the year. Some people can't take it away. And as has been said, if you can't do it through November, December and January, what about between the 31st of October and the 8th of November? So if one day's a washout, they've always got another six or seven. It's not going to be massive fires. It's not going to be huge bonfires because if they're using braziers, the smoke's going to be at a minimum anyway. It's just from all the people I know that have allotments, probably 80% of them have small fires sometimes through the year to get rid of the rubbish, get rid of the waste. It's just something that's always been done in gardening. I know we're trying to move away from that now with composting, recycling the wooden waste. But until that can be put in place for every allotment, it'd just help them out to clear some of the area if they could have small fires for a week. And now that was it. I just can't think of anything else to say there. Thank you.
No, you're our gardening expert. So thank you very much. Councillor Brown and then it's councillor Tim Hallam.
Yeah, there seems, there's two things here. This year perhaps not, is not a good time for a single bonfire because it tends to attract a lot of people, if I remember rightly, and, you know, it's quite a little bit of an event. And we can't really have events this year. The second thing, there seems to be three sorts of rubbish. That, that which is wood, and as Ross rightly says, sorry, councillor Boffinger rightly says, can be chipped. That which can be composted and that which really you should burn. I've put bindweed in my compost to my, and I regretted it ever since. It's now it's spread all over the garden instead of one place. So yeah, there's, there's, there's three sorts. Could be bounced back to the allotment holders as to what to do with what part of rubbish, because we could arrange a wood collection once a year, for example. But, you know, if people can't rid of it, how do they get on the allotment in the first place? That's making me scratch my head. Yeah, just, we used to burn the field up behind me. That's not happening anymore. The gardeners need to catch up, really.
Okay, no, no, thank you. And councillor Tim Hallam, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. The, it's difficult at the, at the moment to condone any sort of generation of smoke, even if you ignore the environmental angle. The pandemic that we're facing is to do with respiratory difficulties. It affects the lungs. So I think it's, I think it's unwise to do this now. I'm of, I'm of torn opinion as to whether over the long term, small controlled fires to get rid of things that can't be composted or disposed of any other way. I think there is a logic to that, but I'm inclined to agree with councillor Gould and councillor Boffinger that in an environmental way, it's not the right thing to do. And under this pandemic, it's especially not the right thing to do. So unfortunately, I, you know, I wouldn't like to support the, what the allotment holders, holders want at the moment.
Okay. And I think, is that councillor Derby got his hand up for this one? And then I think that's everybody then, isn't it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The reasoning for having a bonfire on allotments absolutely astounds me really, because, I mean, they grow, they grow the stuff to make the compost. You know, so why would you want to burn it? And what you've got to remember is that any fire that's lit has to be attended all the time and it's got to be made sure it's out when they leave it. You know what I mean? So and, and of course, if you, if you spread it over a longer period, it's going to give people licence to light fires all over the place. You know what I mean? I think it should be stopped, bonfires altogether, quite frankly. And just, just have organised ones. And especially this time, I think it should be stopped because of this pandemic. You know, we can't, can't really have that placed upon our, our reasoning, you know what I mean? It just don't seem, it don't seem reasonable to light fires in this pandemic as the other councillors have said. I'd be against having bonfires this year anyway, should be organised. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Derby. So before we go back to the town clerk, so my, my thing that I've picked up as well is when, when you do have a bonfire, which I suppose these are class stars, you're supposed to also notify the fire brigade. So if you've got lots of people having lots of fires, that's lots of phone calls going to the fire brigade saying to them, you know, there's a possibility of lots of fires coming up here. So if we go back to the town clerk and then is there a resolution for this that we're voting on?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd like somebody to propose something, please, because obviously, there's lots of different opinions here. So somebody needs to decide whether or not we want to allow fires at all, it seems. But also, what we need to think about then is if we're going to say no fires at all, what are we going to do with those people that decide to fly out that rule and go ahead and burn the pile of stuff that they've gathered over the year?
I mean, I've noticed people on Albany, I've not actually seen them on there, but I've seen it on Facebook where they put pictures. People have been piling stuff up ready to burn already. Anyway, but if we go to, I think we've got councillor Patterson, then it's councillor Frost, and then it's councillor Grindle. I don't, I hopefully one of you is going to propose something.
Well, I propose, basically, if we're going to refuse bonfires this year due to COVID, that it's looked at again in the future about the bonfires, but we also supply some way of disposing of the rubbish that's already been piled into bonfires. Basically, so getting skips again, or, you know, we need some way of the people to get rid of the rubbish.
And is that something that you'd take back to the allotments committee to decide that? Is that, because we wouldn't do that here, would we? Is that?
Right. The next one is not till January. We've only got a few weeks till bonfire night. So I suggest it's something we agree tonight.
Yeah, of course. Okay. So do you want to think about how you want to word that? And then I'll ask the other councillors what they think, then come back to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So I can see councillor, oh no, I thought councillor Needham had her hand up. It's disappeared. Councillor Frost and then councillor Grindle, oh, sorry, and then councillor Needham afterwards, please.
Yeah, with mine, I was going to say that put an amount, put it forward that we missed this year's because of COVID. And then for next year, revisit it. We're first of all with the allotment association and then bring it back to council in January, but only if we can get something to collect all that rubbish, like the skips, et cetera. Because we can't ban the fire and then give them nothing because they'll burn it anyway. So my proposal is basically to ban it for this year because of COVID. Collect the rubbish via skip and then revisit it with the allotment committee in January to bring it back to council next month.
I appreciate that. That's, I think that's kind of along the lines of what councillor Patterson was saying, isn't it? So thank you for that. Councillor Grindle?
Well, yes, thank you. Listening to other people and obviously John, who's a gardening expert and so forth. I think we should ban fires on the allotments. I think it's quite right that we place skips in the places for this year, for people to get rid of their rubbish. And obviously, this is going to have to be looked at again by committee. And so, yes, I will propose that we will, well, I'll second it, that we actually stop bonfires this year and we supply skips. And then obviously, it goes back to the committee again in January.
Okay, so I think that, that's kind of along, again, along the lines of what the others have said. So councillor Needham, and then I'll go back to councillor Patterson because it was her that said it first. So thank you.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what everyone's said about the skip thing and the, for this year. I was just wondering what the cost is of a skip and, you know, because I think we need to get that organised ASAP. So that might be something to ask the clerk to organise as well. So if Sabrina can answer just quickly, because has she organised a skip before? How much it's going to cost? And then we can just say, yeah, yeah, just get on with it.
The large skips cost about £260. So that, and that would be what we would need, I think, looking round. We've just been on our inspection and there's quite a lot of rubbish that's gathering already. So what I'd like to be able to do is set aside
So, um, what I'd like to be able to do is, um, set aside maybe a wood pile because some of the wood is actually reusable and it's stuff that I wouldn't have thrown away. Um, so I'm a bit thrifty and upcycling sort of person, so I think if we can get people to separate their rubbish and just, um, be a bit more sensible about what they're getting rid of, uh, then some of that stuff could be reused and not take up quite so much space in the skip.
So, so back, thank you for that, everybody. So back, back to councillor Patterson, because like I said, she's the one that went first, so.
Yeah, um, so, uh, propose really, um, to ban the fire, uh, bonfires for this year and to supply skips for, um, all the allotment sites. Um, but request, like Sabrina said, that, um, to be thoughtful of what's going in to the skips if wood can be reused. Sorry, I'm waffling now. Um, yeah, so propose basically, um, to ban the bonfires this year and, uh, supply skips.
Okay, and have we got someone to second that proposal?
Oh, second that, Mr Mayor.
Who, who was it?
Yes, um.
Oh, was that Ray? Was that Ray that seconded that?
Yes, it was, yes.
Okay, no, thank you. So do you want to do the, the vote on that, please, Sabrina?
Yeah.
Can I say something in a minute?
If you quick.
Right, actually, um, obviously for any costs regarding the skips will come, can come from, uh, ring fence, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. So yeah, if, if the town clerk would like to take the vote on that.
Yep, um, so again, say four against or abstain please. Uh, councillor Bothinger?
Four.
Uh, councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Derby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Uh, councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Grindel?
Four.
Uh, Jess Hallam?
Four.
Tim Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis?
Four.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Uh, councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
Councillor Patterson?
Four.
Thank you, that's unanimous, Mr Mayor.
Well, uh, thank you, everybody. That, that was quite interesting as well. So that obviously it is what it is. So the next one is D, which is the extraordinary HR and policy review committee meeting, 7th of October. Uh, specific items are set out later on in this agenda, so councillors have to note the recommendations at this stage and then we're considering them later. So is, is, does the town clerk have anything on that or do we just move on?
Uh, no, I've got nothing to say. The, the chairmate, I don't know.
Okay, does the chair, does the chair of that committee have anything to say?
Uh, no, I think we can wait until we get to the relevant item. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
No, that's appreciated. Thank, thank you very much. So item five is public participation session, as far as I'm aware, unless the town clerk tells us any different, I don't think there's anything on item five.
Uh, no, I've had no notifications, Mr Mayor.
Okay, we, we will one day, I'm sure we will. Okay, so item six, oh, that's me, town mayor's engagements. I'm, I'm still actually enjoying this and, and, well, I've got no reason not to. Um, I wrote a few little notes down and I've actually put them down and lost them. Um. No, here it is. So I've been to three things since the last, uh, the last meeting we've had, which I, I appreciate because it is difficult for people to get, you know, to be invited as out. So anything's appreciated and I do enjoy it. The first one was to Sharon Goffin, some of you might know her, she's been a childminder in, I'll say in and around Stapleford, I think it's mostly in Stapleford, for over 30 years, which I think is absolutely amazing. Uh, and a lot of the children she looks after now, she actually looked after their parents when they was younger, so that, that's a, a pretty cool one. And we presented her with some flowers and a certificate and that was all organised as a surprise by her husband, um, which I thought was really nice of him. You know, he's proud of his wife doing that for 30 years and, and I think we're all proud of her. She's a nice person and I'm sure lots of you know her, so that, that was really good. Um, then the next one, I was invited to cut a ribbon, um, at a place called, I think it's pronounced a beauty salon, which is recently opened on Derby Road. It, it was a, a beauty place, they moved to San Diego and then these new guys have took over that. And I, I'd like to thank, um, councillor Derby for, for coming along and taking some photos and that, which is the weirdest thing in the world, because I've, I've spent that many years taking photos of, uh, Ray, it, it's just strange him taking ones than me, but I do appreciate it and I did enjoy him coming along, so thank you for the support. Um, and there's also four new businesses opened round about the same time. Obviously I didn't go to them all, but it's just nice to see, especially in this day and age and the difficulties are at the minute. I mean, four new businesses opening on the high street, I, I think that's pretty cool actually, and, and people investing in our high street and I know there's a few more coming as well. We, I, I'm sure there'll be a day when we haven't got empty shops on the high street and we're getting there slowly, so you know, thank you to the businesses for investing in the town. And then the last one, which was a, a strange thing to do, I actually didn't go out. I, I sat here where I am now with tea and biscuits or cake or whatever I had and, and I didn't eat all of them. Um, I was invited to the mayor of Brockstone, councillor Janet Patrick, absolutely amazing lady, uh, and li- listening to her talk, some of the stuff she's done, it, it, it just blows my mind. She, she's a brilliant person and, and well deserving to be the mayor of Brockstone. And it was her civic event, which was done online, which, which was different. Um, and according to the figures and that, there was over 300 people actually watched the meeting a, and joined in. There, there was a virtual thing on, uh, YouTube that, that was obviously pre-recorded. Um, and then after that, there, there was a meeting like what we're doing now and there was lots of dignitaries there, there was lots of people, but all, all thanks is to Janet, you know, uh, and I wish her the best for the remainder of her year. So that was the three things I've been to. And yeah, I've, I've really enjoyed it. So, you know, thank you for, for letting me do that to represent you guys and obviously to represent Stapleford as well. So, uh, thank you for that. So item seven on the agenda is planning application and decision notices. Um, I'm actually on planning committee, so I'd declare an interest in that one, but I think that was covered with the Brockstone bit. To consider and respond to the following planning applications. So, so there's two on there. So the first one is Stapleford South East Ward, construct a two-storey, single story, rear extensions on 30 Showing Road. I don't know if, has anyone got any comments or concerns on that or, or does the chair of that committee actually want to say anything on these two things and then we'll do it that way?
Um, it's probably for speed, I'll just say something about both of them. Um, I've got no problem with the first one at all. Um, the second one, okay, it's a small space, I've not really got a problem with it personally, but, um, you know, um, but I did notice on the application form that they put in that it was the creating of two new dwellings rather than one. So I'm hoping it's just a, uh, an administrative typo, but I think we just need to just query that, just to make sure that it is actually, uh, they only intend on putting one new dwelling on and not two, but that's all I've got to say on it. Thanks.
Okay, and I think I've got councillor Hawkins has got his hand up on, on one of these two.
Yeah, oh yeah. Um, the one at the rear of 36th Derby Road. Um, they've put down for a 1.5 metre high wall where the garages are going to be knocked down. Shouldn't it be a one metre high wall because it's next to a carriageway? Isn't that too high? Or I'm missing something about planning?
Can I clarify that one, Mr Mayor?
Um, I can hear someone talking, but I can't hear it. What, oh, sorry councillor Hallam, sorry, go on.
Yeah, just to, just to answer councillor Hawkins' questions, because I've had a lot of casework about fence heights recently. It seems to be a, uh, an obsession while people are stuck in the houses. Um, the, um, yeah, one metre high without planning permission. So the fact, the fact that they are putting in a planning application for more than that is the only way that you're allowed to have a fence height more than that within two metres of a public highway.
Oh, okay, my mistake then, thank you.
Okay, that's appreciated. So if I go back to Theresa, are you, are you okay with these? It, it seems like everyone's, whatever, I'm being careful because I'm on planning committee. It's, it's, I, I don't want to get involved in that in case they do go to committee. So is there anything that councillor Needham would like to say?
No, I'm, I'm happy that they can just go through and, uh, no, and, and John, it's good to raise a question. No, don't worry about it.
So we learn, isn't it? If we don't ask, we're never going to know anything, are we? Um, so are, are we okay on that one then, town clerk, to, to move forward to the next one?
Uh, yes, Mr Mayor, that's fine.
Okay, so the next one is, oh, okay, it just popped up in the corner. The next one is item eight, which is the corporate plan. I'm guessing we're going to hand this one over to councillor Needham again. And can I also thank councillor Patterson, because I'm sure the cover of that is her handiwork and it looks pretty cool and colourful.
Yes, it is Sue, thank you for doing that. Um, well, actually, I'll start off with the thank yous, because this is obviously, um, a group effort, because I, I think a lot of people have contributed ideas to this and I know since it first got circulated, it's been to every committee for import and I do appreciate everybody giving some feedback on this. So, uh, there's been a few tweaks since it last went out. Um, on the environmentally, environmental sustainability section, um, we've actually, on the advice of the compost, uh, composters of the allotment holders, removed the direct reference to wormeries because they said it was actually quite a lot of work to maintain. Um, and they said that if you are composting correctly, there's not necessarily any need for it. So we've taken out that direct reference. Um, and they've also, I've also added in about the space for deliveries, because they said that they might like some space for manure deliveries and obviously that was space we'll do for a skip as well that we now need. Um, there was another, uh, issue about, um, we've redefined what the pollinating insect habitat, because when we talked about having a wild flower area, there was some concern about seeds being spread to plot holders and they were a little bit worried about that. So it's been changed, the wording slightly to a managed lavender hedge as an example, so that they don't think that we're going to spread loads of weeds everywhere. Um, and then in the, uh, governance, people and assets, there was a reference, um, removed directly to the Carnegie and it's been instead put, uh, changed to councils buildings. So, um, they're, they're the tweaks that have been made on the advice of the, um, the, the committee. So it's, it's been, it's been through the, around bit, so that's what we've ended up with and yes, and Sue has done some amazing pictures on the front and she, I believe she's still got a, a, a version two ready to come out with more pictures and illustrations in there. So by the time it gets on to, uh, publication, it should look really, really professional. So thank you to everyone who's, who's contributed and I'll have to, Mr Chairman.
Appreciate that. Is, is, I, I mean, this, this is your baby. I know, like you said, and, and it's nice of you to thank everybody, because I, I've read it quite a few times and I really like it. It, it, would it be worth, instead of jumping here, there and everywhere, would it be worth just doing page, page to page? You know, like if we start page one, page two, if, if Theresa, if councillor Needham's happy with that?
Yeah, do you want to, because I don't think I've actually got, hang on, let me find it. Yeah, we can do that if you want.
Okay, well, I'm sure everyone's happy with page one. I know, I know I am and, and thank you again for Sue. And if you're going to change it a bit, it, it's going to be even better, isn't it? So thank you for that. So is, is everyone okay with page one? I'm taking that as a yes. Okay, page two is just the contents, I suppose that's okay, is that, is that okay? Um, oh, sorry, councillor Patterson's got a hand up and councillor Hawkins has got the hands up.
No, sorry, my mistake.
Okay, no worries councillor Patterson.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to take credit for all the photographs that's on that front cover, um, but some are Cy Frost's and also Theresa's. I've just put them all together on the front, on the front page. Um, and I will, uh, email, email out the latest version, um, as well, um, this evening. It's still a work in progress, so I shall, I shall ma- email that out. Okay.
Yeah, oh, okay. So thank you to the other councillors that contributed photos, because they're, they're all pretty good. You've obviously been copying off Sue. So page two, is, is, are we all happy with page three? Yeah. Page four? Page five? Okay, we're getting that, oh, yep. Page six? Seven? Eight?
Mr Mayor?
Um, councillor Hallam?
Thanks. Uh, the, yeah, the, overall, and, um, I want to say, I think this is a lot more realistic and, and actually a really good, uh, foundation on which to build. That's my, my general comment, so I've just saved it for page eight for random fun. Um, the, um, on page eight specifically, um, and I thank councillor Needham for, um, removing at my request the references to specific locations to allow the document to be more, uh, generic and, um, and evolve, uh, over time. The, um, the item that says working with police partners to establish a police base in the Carnegie, um, that not only does that tie it down to a location, um, which might not necessarily, obviously there's a motion later where we can discuss things of that nature. Um, but also I think the police have been known to say before that they weren't actually interested. So it might be, um, it might be better to change that wording to, uh, to encourage a greater police presence within Stapleford. And that allows, that's, that's sort of compatible with the idea of giving them somewhere to, where to put their traffic cones if they want, uh, without being, being prescriptive as to how, because, because really and truly, that's the end game, isn't it? Get more police presence in Stapleford.
And, and I'm sure they've got more than traffic cones. Um, councillor Grindel?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I, I would just second what Tim has just said, councillor Hallam has just said, no more to be said on the subject at this time.
Okay, so if, if we go through all the way to the end and then, and then we'll come back to councillor Needham for the, the, the things that people raise, if that's okay. So page nine? Ten? Page 11? And last but not least, page 12?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Uh, councillor Hallam again, please.
Thanks very, um. The identify training needs and put together a programme of training for councillors to attend, which ensures councillors have the knowledge to carry out their duties legally and responsibly, uh, full stop, I agree with. Um, then after that, it's going into, into specifics again and those specifics are a snapshot of, a snapshot in time. I don't think it's necessary in a generic top level document like this and it's certainly, given that, um, that was a contentious issue and wasn't unanimously passed, it might be worth just removing the last sentence.
Okay, no, appreciated. Um, and I think no one else has got anything to say. So if we go back to councillor Needham for them two points that was raised, um, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to change those, that's not a problem. We can, uh, do that.
It's, it's kind of, it's a rolling document then, isn't it? Like you, it's been updated a million times, hasn't it?
Yeah, it is meant to be like a, a working document, so it is not meant to be sort of like casting stone. It is sort of like this, this is what we're aiming for. So yeah, no, I'm happy to make those changes, not a problem.
No, that, that's appreciated. So, so thank you everyone for your input in that again. And like I said, I, I've really enjoyed reading it. I think there's a lot of things in there that's, you know, it, it's going to be good fun, um, seeing them come to life, isn't it? And, and I'm sure between all, all the people that's at the council and the staff and the, even people out in the community, you know, let, let's try and make these things happen to better generate, better, you know, to benefit Stapleford. So thank you. So is?
Mr Mayor?
Mr Mayor? Councillor Grindel?
Okay, if I may, Mr Mayor, I was to thank the leader, um, uh, for that, um, because it, it will help in the long run. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. And then councillor Needham, if it's okay, once, once this is like, like finally done and it's ready to go and, and that lot, would it be possible, I, I know you, you don't like printing the things out all the time, but would we be allowed to have one copy printed out and put in Stapleford Library as a, um, a reference document? Because people do go in there to read things, I'm sure, just, I, I, I think we can squeeze one paper copy, can't we? And put it in Stapleford Library, if that's okay with you?
I'll let you have one, I'll, I'll work out your carbon footprint first. Yeah, I'll let you have one.
Well, you print it out and I'll carry it around there so it doesn't get posted or anything. We'll save on a stamp unless we can get councillor McGrath to do it as a postman special, I We'll save on a stamp unless we can get councillor McGrath to do it as a postman special. I don't know. But no, I just think people appreciate that. So thank you. So.
Mr Mayor.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, could we vote on it just to sort of, obviously it's not, it's a working document in the sense that it will be refreshed every year and if anything comes up that's majorly detrimental to it, then we can refresh it at that point. But we do need to formally approve. This is the council's plan going forward for the time being, as it were.
And do you need to do that by exception or do you need like a show of hands or a shout out? What do you prefer on that one?
It can be by exception if everybody's happy to do that. If anybody wants a recorded vote, they need to speak up.
Okay, so speak up or don't. Okay, so if anyone's against that.
You need a seconder.
Oh, sorry. Go on then, right. Councillor.
You need a seconder.
Is that what you're doing?
I'll second it if that's.
Okay, so that's proposed by councillor Needham and seconded by councillor Derby. So is anyone against that? And anyone want to abstain? Okay, so that's that carried and I look forward to seeing the next lot done. So the next bit is nine, which is staffing review to consider a report of the town clerk. So that's over to the town clerk, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is something that's actually come through the HR and policy review committee. And it's basically something that we've been talking about for a while. If you remember, it seems a long time ago now, early in the year, we talked about having a deputy clerk and possibly a apprentice. And then we've started developing the corporate plan, which led me to think actually we need something a little bit more than that. And to sort of try and work out what we would need over the life of the plan as well. So I've sent the report round. I don't have anything more to add. I'm assuming everybody has read it. But I'm happy to take questions and of course, anybody from HR will be able to take questions as well.
Okay, so I can see one hundred at the moment, which is councillor Grindle, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Yes, regarding the points for the town clerk, I have no problem with that, obviously. Secondly, a position for a person that might have to leave for 12 months. And we all know the reason possibly why. I'm quite happy with that. And that's as far as I'm prepared to actually go at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, that's appreciated. So does anyone else have anything on that? Okay, so it looks like this. Oh, sorry, councillor Hallam, Tim Hallam.
Thank you. Microsoft Teams keeps moving all the buttons around. I keep, I keep misclicking. Yeah, I think that, I understand that some of these positions are sort of a little bit more speculative in terms of whether we need them or not right now. Personally, there's a lot going on. I've already declared an interest. So I'm going to, if we're taking this voting by separate parts, then I'm going to abstain on that element of it for obvious reasons. But there's a lot going on on economic development at the moment at the Broxton. So much so that the town council, with all the precept in the world and all the staff in the world, probably wouldn't be able to keep up. Because we've got a lot of additional resources to bolster the team anyway. Because that was something that I was very keen to do on taking the chair of that committee. And a lot of that's come into fruition. And there's also positions to deal specifically with Covid and supporting businesses in the town centres across the borough with a focus on Stapleford as a part of that, that are already created and likely to be created very soon. I won't go any further than that because obviously I'm at risk of either announcing stuff that hasn't been announced yet or preempting the outcome of committees that haven't sat yet. But I think that the return on investment from Stapleford to create that position would be nowhere near as high as the return on investment for the staff already working, surrounded by a very supportive team on Broxton Borough Council.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And I can see councillor Kearney, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify actually the timeline. So if you are looking at the report and you're seeing items, if you're looking at the sort of the flow, not the flow chart, sorry, the structure, the organisational structure, you'll see that some of them are marked in red, others are marked in grey. The ones marked in blue are obviously the current staffing situation. The red ones are the ones that we are really looking at approving today. They're also, just to be clear, that these are not expected to be recruited immediately. There is a specific timeline which the clerk had discussed with me and that we went over at the previous HR meeting as well, that this would be something that we'd be looking to do over the next year and a half to two years to give us time to ensure that we're doing this in a way that we can sustain and that we can afford to do. With regard to what councillor Hallam's just said, I appreciate that you may have things going on at the Borough Council, but you haven't consulted with anybody here on those. And this is the first we've heard of it. I think the thing is, we can't make decisions on what may or may not be happening at the Borough Council. We have to make decisions based on the information that we have. And I think the other thing to note is that we have completely different priorities and responsibilities to the Borough Council. There's no reason why the roles can't complement each other, you know, if the roles at the Borough Council come to fruition. There's no reason why we can't look to work together on the things that we can work together on. And there's no reason why we can't do things separately from the Borough Council, where the Borough Council don't need to be involved in something. So I appreciate what councillor Hallam's saying, but you can't sort of come to a meeting and drop that on us when we're about to vote on something, not giving us any information about it whatsoever. It's a little bit unfair. And I think really that we should be disregarding that information because we don't have any further information on it. And it may not come to fruition.
No, no, that's a fair point. Councillor Needham, and then I think I've got councillor Gould after that, please.
Sorry, I'm just finding buttons. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Sabrina again for putting this together. And basically, I just wanted to point out, you know, that these roles are potentially going to be shared between different councils. So obviously that the number of hours could be varied depending on what we say, you know, because I don't think it would hurt if those roles that councillor Hallam talked about do come to fruition. I think then we can enter dialogue about how many hours they would actually spend working on Stapleford. Because we're basically saying we want a minimum of eighteen point five hours commitment a week. And depending on the number of roles that come through Borough, it may be, obviously they're working boroughwide, they may not be able to provide those hours for us. So it might be that, you know, we can employ this person in conjunction with other councils and share the hours between us. And they can look at it from like a very localised perspective. So kind of what councillor Kearney said about, you know, these things aren't necessarily against each other. They can be cooperative. And also, you know, I think that, like, you know, with it being a longer term view, I think we do need extra support in the office because depending on which one comes through as a priority area, you know, because obviously this is like, it's going to be a moving thing, like we said, you know, it's going to be reviewed several times probably before it actually comes to fruition. So I think we do need to sort of set a stall out that we do want to increase the number of staff hours. Because as I've said before, in four years' time, well, in two years' time, it might be a completely different set of councillors sat around this meeting, hopefully in a building, not online. And we lose institutional memory. So if we've got people in positions that are fixed, I think that actually helps us keep our momentum going on some of the projects that we might start now and probably outlive our terms as councillors potentially, you know, because nobody knows what's going to happen in the next election. So I think, you know, we've got to think about doing this and actually setting something in stone so that it doesn't just become lost every time we have an election or new councillors start. So that's all I've got to say on it. And thank you.
That's appreciated. Thank you. I think it's councillor Gould and then it's councillor Grindle.
Well, first of all, well said to councillor Needham. Now, I'm rather perturbed in terms of councillor Hallam's reluctance to support these extra members of staff. Is that because the Liberal Democrats are preparing to sell Carnegie? Can you answer that? Please? Or indeed abolish the council altogether?
Actually. Can we keep it, the discussion to what's actually on the paper, what we're talking about and not?
We're talking about Carnegie and we're talking about staffing it for the future. Does it have a future?
So councillor, I'm just looking who's next. Councillor Hallam? Sorry, councillor.
I'm not going to go off topic. We can talk about the Carnegie Centre later. Just to clarify the position that I hold on this, I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody but me. I think there's a lot of scope for the town council to do a lot of good. The duplicating roles that already exist to other layers of government doesn't make a lot of sense to me. There's an economy of scale that goes with staffing. And it's always good to work in a team where people can share their relevant expertise. So the same would go for the youth engagement officer. Just to, just Mr Mayor, with your permission to answer a point that councillor Kearney raised. The is not really about me bringing what I know to this council. Because as you know, when things, particularly in this Covid environment, are changing all the time, I could be aware of some new funding streams that might be opening up. But it would be remiss of me to say something in a public forum before that's actually set in stone. That would be sort of irresponsible. So I try to, I try to be transparent as transparent as possible. But I also don't want to, you know, give people false hope and mislead expectation. But I think the burden when you're working out in this situation, whether something is compatible or not with a function that already exists and is well established. I think the burden of proof lies on the person that wants to create the new position that they don't already have a responsibility for. So I would fully support the town council approaching youth services at Nottinghamshire County and economic development at Broxton Borough to determine whether there are any holes that need filling and whether the town could help with that. But it feels the wrong way around to go, well, the town can do it. And these organisations that have already got established positions haven't told us not to, so we're going to do it. It's reverse logic to the way I think it should be done. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
No, no, thank you. And sorry, Sabrina's got a hand up.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I just thought it might be helpful to clarify. Although the post is called the Town Regeneration Officer, we'll ignore the youth one at the moment. It's not intended for it to do the same role as the Borough Council's officers. This is primarily an events post, so trying to work out, doing all the VE Day and all of that thing that we were trying to do. I didn't have the time to do that. We needed somebody to be able to do that. And there are more events that the council wants to run. So predominantly, that's what this post is for and for running our social media and just promoting the town from our angle as well. But I would want them to be working with the borough's officers to help support them or for them to help support us, whichever way around it comes, to just promote Stapleford as a place to come, to do business, to live and to have fun, basically. So that's really what that post is about. It's not about doing technical economic development work, as it were.
No, that's appreciated. And councillor Grindle.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I've spent quite a few hours looking into this area that we're discussing. And I would like to put two proposals forward, Mr Mayor. The first one is obviously looking at the situation, the town clerk needs a deputy town clerk, which will tie up some more time for our town clerk to go out and get funding, which is in the paperwork. I'd be quite happy with that. Regarding an assistant in the office, because possibility that the assistant we have might be away for a year, and we won't go into any more of that because we all know about that. And I propose that actually we vote on these two issues tonight. That's a start. That's a foundation. For the rest of the post and other things, I think, yes, it can obviously be discussed at finance and general purposes and HR again. And as we start to build this menu of what the council possibly would like to see, there's a lot more work to be done on the other positions. So, and they'll come forward eventually to a vote after discussions with committees. And that's a good way of doing it. So yes, I'm very happy to vote tonight and propose that we actually get a deputy town clerk. And my second one, I propose that we actually have a person ready for administration in case of circumstances changes. Put it that way. I'm quite happy with that. The rest, I think we need to discuss further. It needs to go back to committees and then come forward again. It's a programme that is very colourful. I can see exactly what the leader and the town clerk would like to see. And, but obviously it's going to take more than two, three years. So I'm putting both my proposals forward, Mr Mayor. And then hopefully the council can move on to the other stuff as it comes up. But I think these two positions that I've been discussing are the most important two at the moment. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And if we can go back to Sabrina and then to councillor Kearney, please.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't take my hand down. Apologies.
No worries. Okay, councillor Kearney, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to make clear, having just listened to councillor Grindle's proposals, that is my intention to propose that we accept the whole report this evening in its entirety. One of the recommendations in there is that this be referred to the Finance and General Purposes Committee to have a look at how we can plan the finances around this. And we'll stress again that this is not something that is going to happen overnight. This is going to take time and we are not going to spend money that we haven't got. We are going to have a plan of how this is going to happen. And that is going to be the responsibility of the Finance and General Purposes Committee to come up with if we vote in favour of this tonight. So I am proposing that we vote on the whole report, that we accept the whole report as it stands.
Okay, no, thank you for that. And councillor Frost, and then we'll go back to the town clerk to see what we do next.
I'd like to second Ella. I think it's, we need to vote through this whole thing and then go to the committees. I think that's the best way forward for everybody here. So yeah, second Ella.
Okay, that's appreciated. So Sabrina.
Mr Mayor, we've got a proposal and a second for Ella's motion. We don't have anything for councillor Grindle's. We just have his motion removing it. We don't have a second, sorry.
Okay. And did anyone want to second what councillor Grindle had said?
I'll second that, but if that's, but for the sake of expediency, Mr Mayor, I would request, since I've already been quite transparent, that there's an element of this that I'm going to abstain on due to a declared interest. I would respect.
You sound like a doll.
I would, I'd really appreciate being able to vote for these five sections in parts because otherwise that's tying my hands on the basis of an interest to not be able to make my vote count on the other elements of it.
Okay. Mr Mayor, if I may just jump in, I'm happy to do that. That's what we did at the extraordinary meeting of the HR committee. So I'm more than happy to vote on the parts separately and change.
Individually.
We vote on.
Thank you very much. If I may then, if I may then, on that basis, because of that splitting up. With greatest respect to councillor Grindle, I think that the splitting up of this motion into multiple parts covers the same purposes. So I withdraw my second.
Okay. And then councillor Brown, I think he's got his hand up. And then we need to go to the vote.
Sorry, yes, I was going to be the second for councillor Grindle. However, now that's makes more sense. Because I don't like to see important parts slowed down for the one that we're still considering. And when you all stand for elections, I won't be. You need to be able to say to your electorate, we did these actions, not that we got more staff.
Okay, no, no, that's appreciated. So we've got a, have people put their hands back up again? Or because we do need to go to the vote? Or if it's still up from last time?
Mr Mayor, I withdraw.
Okay, no, that's not a problem. So, and councillor Frost, is your hands from up before or did you want to say something?
Yeah, guilt is charged, sorry.
No, it's all right. I'd rather ask you than miss you asking a question. So. So councillor Kearney's put a proposal forward, it's been seconded. And if, if the town clerk wants to go through these, obviously we're doing each one bit at a time, aren't we? So I think five ones, the first one, isn't it?
Yeah. So if I just go, if I, I'm assuming everybody can see the report. But if I read out the, each recommendation perhaps, and then you can, we'll go through the vote if that makes sense to, to people. So recommendation 5.1 is that the council approve and implement the new structure as set out in the report. And obviously just noting that that's going to be over a period of time for everybody. So if I could go through and you say four against or abstain, please. So councillor Boffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Grindle?
Four.
Jess Hallam?
Abstain.
Tim Hallam?
Against.
Councillor Hallam Davis?
Abstain.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
Abstain.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
And councillor Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. That's, that one's carried. So 5.2 is that the council seek an external job evaluation process to be undertaken for all the posts at the council via NALC. So again, four against or abstain, please. Councillor Boffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Darby?
Four.
Epton?
Four.
Frost?
Four.
Gould?
Four.
Grindle?
Abstain.
Jess Hallam?
Four.
Tim Hallam?
Four.
Hallam Davis?
Sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble with my connection at the moment. I've hardly heard the question or anybody's responses. It's coming and going, but it's getting worse.
Would, would you like the question read out again to you?
Yes, please, but you'll probably come in and out again like you have been.
Okay, this one just says, the council seek an external job evaluation process to be undertaken for all posts at the council via NALC. Did you get that?
Sorry, could you repeat it?
The council seeks an external job evaluation process to be undertaken for all posts at the council via NALC.
Oh, that was clearer. Thank you. Abstain.
Councillor Hawkins?
Four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four. And if I may, Chair, I'm just wondering, I've got the, I've got the recommendations in front of me. Would you like me to put them in the chat bar for anybody that might be having connection troubles?
Yeah, that would be appreciated. Thank you. That's very kind of you. Thank you.
Councillor McCrae?
Four.
Councillor Needham?
Four.
And councillor Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. That one's carried. 5.3?
Shall we just wait a moment? Sorry, I was going to say, if Ella's going to drop, sorry, councillor Kearney's going to drop that in the chat as well, just in case anybody can't, doesn't hear it properly. And then the town clerk will read it out as well.
Obviously, Mr Mayor, my chat bar's whirring around and it won't let me, won't let me put anything in. But I'm happy to quickly email them to councillor Hallam Davis and anyone else if they'd like.
Okay. Let, let's try and read it out first and then see how it goes. And then if you want to email that as we're doing that, then that's appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Chair, can I just add that I'm only on one screen, so I won't be able to receive an email at this point anyway.
Oh, okay. Councillor, councillor Tim Hallam's put it in the chat if you can see it in there.
Right, thank you.
And we're on 5.3, so if the town clerk wants to go back to that.
Yeah. So this one is 5.3, that in the first instance, the post of deputy clerk be advertised for immediate recruitment to begin the capacity building and ensure continuity of service in the absence of current staff. Did councillor Hallam Davis hear that or can see it?
Yeah, both. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Right, so councillor Boffinger, four against or abstain, please?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Sorry, a bit difficult to hear, four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Frost?
Four.
Gould?
Four.
Grindle?
Four.
Jess Hallam?
Four.
Tim Hallam?
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis?
Four.
Hawkins?
Four.
Kearney?
Four.
McCrae? Needham?
Four.
Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. That one was unanimous. So then 5.4 is that council instructs the clerk to formally approach Eastwood and Kimberley Town Councils regarding the shared town regeneration officer proposal. So councillor Boffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Abstain.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Grindle?
Abstain.
Jess Hallam?
Abstain.
Tim Hallam?
Abstain.
Hallam Davis?
Abstain.
Hawkins?
Four.
Kearney?
Four.
McCrae?
Four.
Needham?
Four.
And Patterson then, four. That's carried. So 5.5 is that the council refer the matter of accommodation to the Finance and General Purposes Committee for consideration. Councillor Boffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Darby?
Four.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Frost?
Four.
Gould?
Four.
Grindle?
Four.
Jess Hallam?
Four.
Tim Hallam?
Four.
Hallam Davis?
Four.
Hawkins?
Four.
Kearney?
Four.
McCrae?
Four.
Needham?
Four.
And Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Chair.
So thank you, everybody. So let me get back to the, and thank you, everybody for taking part in that. So the next item on the agenda is, we're just on staff, aren't we? Right, finance update, item 10 and A, B and C. So A, summary of receipts and payments to date. And you'll all have had these sent out to you. So does the town clerk need to say anything on this before? I'm sure David Grindle, councillor Grindle will be having his hand up.
No, thanks, Mr Mayor. It's just for information.
Okay, councillor Grindle, do you wish, did you say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not here to cause chaos and confusion as usual, but I'd actually like to ask the town clerk. Previously, as she knows, I used to go in and check the finance sheets and sign them all off. Is this being done by the Chair of Finance? If so, that's fine. If not, have they been sent to her previously before they're printed and sent to councillors?
Sorry, can I just clarify through the chair? Has what been sent to who previously?
Okay, town clerk, the, the, what you've sent, the finance sheets, which I have no problem with at the moment, except for one item. Obviously, these, you put, you get this organised in your office, obviously. And I used to obviously come in and check them each month before they were printed out for councillors and, and sign obviously everything off. Is that being done?
No, we've not been, because I've had you come in and do a few items at a time. But because of the, obviously, we're not in the office on a regular basis, we need to organise that to happen. So this is the report that comes out of the finance system, which has got everything on that we've been paying and that's already been approved through council. So we just need somebody to come in and do that. If you want to do that, that's fine. All the Chair of Finance can do it now that we have one.
Yes, thank you for that. I've just got one small question now. When, last in September at town council meeting, we decided to give £250. This is for the climate certificate, if you remember. Do you remember that?
For the what certificate? Sorry, you cut out.
For £250 payment regarding past last month at council, and the council agreed to pay the £250. I don't see it actually in the expenditure sheet. Has it been done yet?
It's, it's, sorry, you keep cutting out when you say what the actual thing is for. Is this for the climate change thing? Oh, right. Yeah, no, no, that's, it's not been decided yet what we're going to pay that towards. It's going to the planning committee to discuss options as to what we might spend that money on. So no, it hasn't gone out yet.
Okay, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And does anyone else have any questions on the, the finance update? Right, so do you need to take a vote on that to approve it or?
Yes, we need to approve item B, please, Chair.
Approval of payments. And do you do that by exception, I suppose, on that one?
Yeah, we can do. That's the easiest thing to do if you, if everybody's happy to do that.
Is everyone happy to that? Is anybody object? Or anybody abstain? Okay, is that, are you okay with that one?
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, so, so thank you for that. So next item on the agenda is item 11, which is small events competitions to consider granting delegated authority to the town clerk in conjunction, sorry, in consultation with the Chair and Deputy Chair of the Events Committee and the Leader of the Council to set up small events or competitions for the community during the remainder of the financial year, utilising unspends for cancelled events to purchase small prizes to cover ancillary costs. I suppose this one's to the town clerk first before we see if anyone's got any questions.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, if I may. Point of order, Mr Mayor, if I may.
Okay, sorry, councillor Hallam Davis, yes?
It is councillor Hallam Davis. It's standing order number 31A that I'd like to point out. States, a decision, whether affirmative or negative of the council shall not be reconsidered within six months, save by special motion and so on and so forth. Now, I feel that the minutes of the annual meeting held on the 24th of July, if you see item 38, 2020, records that the council resolved that the cancellation of existing planned events be confirmed with the, with alternative provision to be considered by the Events, Arts and Heritage Committee. This having been resolved barely three months ago, I respectfully suggest that, that we should, that we should not, not be asked to reconsider it at the present. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, and is the town clerk want to come back on that one?
Yeah, I can do. If, if council wants to go that way, that's fine. It's just because with the Covid situation, things keep changing. So to actually have a proper planned programme is rather difficult at the moment. So this was to be able to react quickly to general ideas. So if anybody on council had an idea of something that they thought we might want to do in the community, then we could move quickly and do that thing, obviously subject to the consultation. So it's, it's up to council. They don't have to approve this if they don't want to. We can try and do something through the Events Committee. But it was just to make it for this year, just to be easier during the current circumstances.
But where, and what, we're, oh, sorry, councillor Kearney, and then now. Yep, councillor Kearney.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just wondering if I could propose a 10-minute recess in light of councillor Hallam Davis's point of order, so that councillors can go away and review the relevant standing order and the particular part of the minutes from the annual town meeting, so they can come back having looked at that properly and make an informed decision.
I mean, I'm, I, I haven't got a problem with that. I've got a copy here. If you could remind me which one it is, I'm more than happy to read it out. And then, but if, if, if everybody's happy with what you've just said.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm dyslexic though, so I could do with a little bit of extra time to.
Okay, no, that's not a problem.
That's all right.
I know, we've got to be fair by everybody.
To council, but that's the reason I sort of proposed a recess.
Okay, and is everybody happy with that? Well, I suppose it doesn't matter if you're happy with it. I, I think it's a reasonable request. So if we have a, a quick, it's now 2049, so if we're back 2059, that just gives us a quick 10 minutes. If you haven't, I suppose you've all got a copy of the standing orders, you should have anyway. And which, I'm just looking now, if, if this helps you all with speed, it's the bottom of page. Tell me if I'm wrong, councillor Hallam Davis. Is it the bottom of page eight and you said 31A?
I'm sorry, my connection's going again, Mr Mayor.
Okay, sorry, did you, did you say?
It was 31A.
31A. So if that, if that helps people dig it out and then we've got about nine and a half minutes left and then we'll, we'll come back and, and.
Oh, if that's what you're asking. I thought you were asking for a page number. I can confirm that it's standing order 31A, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
That's okay. And if anyone needs a toilet, it now has an excuse in it there as well.
Thank you.
Somebody's got the microphone on. It sounds like you're making a coffee.
Sorry, I'm scrolling. It's me. I do apologise.
Grindle making a coffee. It sounded like a, a lid being unscrewed.
No, I'm furiously scrolling, just trying to get to the right bits.
It's, it's never at the beginning, is it?
No.
Mr Mayor? Sorry, is councillor?
I'm still here, I, I just put my mic on mute, I'm, I'm here.
That's okay, it's councillor Jess Hallam, I've just got to let you, just making you aware that I'm going to have to disappear very shortly to get to work.
Okay, it can't be, it can't be helped, can it, it's. You've got to do your thing, haven't you, you work, you work nights, don't you?
I do, yeah.
Take care Jess.
Right, okay, right, is, is everybody, because it's, it's 2059, so that 10 minutes is up, we, we do need to start again. So I've, I've, is, is everybody back?
I'm happy to continue.
I'm here Mr Mayor.
Okay, as lo, as long as we're, we've got enough of us here and we're all back and that, so yeah, I've, I've actually read the standing orders as well, and it does say, the decision of the council shall not be reconsidered within six months. So I do, I do, you know, we do have to stick by the standing orders. I, I do, I do think that's correct what's been said, but I can see there's a few hands gone up, so. We'll start with, I think I've got, is it councillor Buffinger to start with?
Yeah, I, the thing I'm not sure about is that this is the same decision that was, as happened at the town, the annual town meeting. If councillor Hallam Davis could explain how it's the same decision, that'd be useful.
Okay, and then I've got councillor Kearney.
Yeah, thank you Mr Mayor, I think the item that councillor Hallam Davis is referring to only dealt with the cancellation of events, and it was clear that it didn't preclude the council from organising other events in the item. Indeed, it actually mentions, it doesn't actually mention competitions at all. Events are the remit of the Arts Events and Heritage Committee, but as we've planned, there is no reason why this can't come directly to full council under the standing orders. And the item in the annual town meeting minutes makes provision for bringing the organising of new events to council. Therefore, I believe this to be a false point of order.
Okay, has, has anyone else got anything to say? So, so councillor Tim Hallam?
Mr Mayor, thanks, yeah, the, I, I agree with the point of order, having looked at this, because it makes it very clear, yes, the first part of it deals with the cancellation of, of all events that were planned up until that point. Thereafter it goes on to say, but essentially, I'm not reading this right now, but it's, it goes on to say, as councillor Kearney's pointed out, that, that new events can be, can be organised, and more specifically, it says by the Arts Events and Heritage Committee, so I do believe that the standing order's valid, because to make it, when the decision's already been made that new events can be organised by the Arts Events and Heritage Committee, to have another motion and say, we don't want the Arts Events and Heritage Committee to organise events, is actually contradicting an already agreed decision that's been resolved.
Yeah, no, no, I, I actually agree with that one, so I do, I do think.
Yeah Mr Mayor, I'm sorry, but I really just think that this is to do with the cancellation of events, the, the standing order is relating to an item which was to do with the cancellation of events. This, this item does not relate to the cancellation of events, it relates to the organisation of events, and I think council should be allowed to vote on it. And I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit baffled as to why it is that councillor Hallam Davis doesn't, doesn't want this voted on anyway. It seems like something perfectly reasonable, if this was just for the sake of, because that's what the standing orders say, it seems silly. There must be a reason why councillor Hallam Davis doesn't want this voted on, I would love to hear what it is.
Okay, and, and does councillor Hallam Davis want to come back on that one quickly?
Yeah, thank you Mr Mayor, I, I just believe that, that things should go through committees, and I see nothing in that that suggests that it shouldn't, and I think we're, we're redetermining something that's already been decided. The way I'm reading it, it, it's, it seems perfectly plain that, okay, we've had to deal with, with Covid events being, being cancelled, but it was agreed that further provision would be considered by the Arts Events and Heritage Committee. Nothing else.
Okay, no, thank you for that, so councillor, oh sorry councillor Nida.
Hello, thank you, I've just been having a look at the delegated, I know we've only just passed this, but actually I've been looking at the scheme of delegation of what the clerk can and cannot do, and it's in part 5.5, and it says the town clerk may do anything pursuant to the delegated power or duty which it would be lawful for the council to do, including anything reasonably implied or incidental to that power of duty. Now, obviously, that does mean that obviously it is legal for the council to run a competition, so in theory we can delegate that power to her. I do think I need to put my hand up and apologise at this point, because I do realise that I have probably caused an issue here over a certain competition. I honestly didn't think it would cause an issue, and it obviously has. So really what this is, I feel, is just clarifying what is anything reasonably implied, because I would have thought that it was reasonable for the clerk to have delegated power to, to say, yes, it's okay to run a competition that didn't have a financial implication or a strategic implication for the council. I do appreciate that people feel differently, in this case, I think that this is a compromise. And I think we can, we can agree that actually i- in, in some extreme events like we've got with Covid, doing some, if, if somebody wants to do something, I'd really like it if we could support a councillor in doing something positive for the community. We all know that sometimes the council procedures are a little bit laboured, and that's why we've got delegated powers to the clerk. So in this instance, what I'm saying is, I put my hand up, have a go at me, but can we move on and just make it so that in future we can support each other and actually give these delegated powers to the clerk, thank you, I'll be to you.
Councillor Brown?
Hi, yeah, I mean, in any case, the Events Committee can't meet that, that frequently enough to sort of decide on, on events that come up quickly, I mean, so, but, there, there's often other people who've got, the reason why we have a council is that we can bring along an idea, then suddenly comes, somebody comes up with something better or a good reason why it shouldn't be done, that's, that's the whole idea of democracy, isn't it? So there should be some way about to, with this technological age, which hopefully is overcoming Covid, to get hold of the, the Events Committee, you see. This, this has come up, is, would it be a good idea, you know, what, what does everybody think, that could be done quite quickly? Just a thought.
Okay, and I've got, I think I've got councillor Patterson, I can see a name at the bottom.
Yeah, I just think, under the current circumstances, I think Theresa's covered what I was gonna say. Under the current circumstances, we need to be able to react a little bit quicker to what's, what's happening in the community and what the community want us to be doing. So, I mean, we, like Bob said, if, if we could agree it through, via an email through the Events Committee, that would be great. But I think we need to be able to react and do these little things that are good for the community quite quickly and not have to be stalling and waiting all the time for the next committee to come up or bringing it to full council, because that's six weeks lost when there's an idea that's there. That's all really, thanks.
Okay, thank you, and I can't see, has anyone else got their hands up, or, I think councillor Telmalam's gone, hand's gone up again by the looks of it.
Yes Mr Mayor, I'm not sure, I'm not quite following whether we're discussing the motion or whether we're still discussing the point of order. I, I wonder with Mr Mayor, whether you as the Chair of this meeting would, would give some clarity on that and, and possibly making, make a ruling on whether you consider it to be a, a valid point of order or not. I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy whichever way it, whichever way it goes and, and I'll just, just throw my opinion squarely at whatever you decide on, because you're the Chair.
No, no, I appreciate that, I mean, I, I always get told rules are rules and, you know, you can't change them and bend them and that, and I'm sure I'd be getting slagged off all over the place if I ever did it, so I think we do need to stick with the standing orders. And if, you know, they are being looked at, they are being rewritten, but at the moment they are what they are. It does actually say, a decision of the council shall not be reconsidered within six months, and if we start slipping now and doing things now, then where, where do we start? You know, do we do something on, on the next thing on the agenda, because we, or just change it and throw it out, I don't, I don't think it's right, so. You know, Chair of the Committee, I, I do think the point of order is valid. It does say 31A on page 8, that a decision of the council shall not be reconsidered within six months. We have got an Events Committee, there's nothing to say that it can't be called up, you know, as long as the, the three, three working days notice is given, which is plenty. So yeah, I'm gonna withhold the point of order, so a decision of the council shall not be reconsidered within six months. So on, on that, I think we need to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 12, which is appointments to committees, thank you. So, following receipt of a resignation from the Arts Heritage and, sorry, Events and Heritage Committee, council to appoint a replacement councillor to fill the vacancy, so I'm guessing there, is there any nominations for that please?
Yeah, if I may.
Councillor Frost?
I'd like to nominate John Hawkins, councillor John Hawkins to the role.
Okay, thank you, any, and does anyone want to second that?
I will second that, I will second that councillor.
Uh, thank, thank you councillor Gould, and is there any more nominations?
I'll nominate councillor Grindel please.
Okay, no, that's appreciated, and does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Was that councillor? Okay, sorry, yeah, it just kind of flashes, I think it's updated. Okay, so we'll, we'll go with the first one first, which was councillor John Hawkins, and does the town clerk seems to have disappeared off me thing, I can't see her now, obviously she's still here. Would you like to take the vote on that please?
Yes, sorry Chair, I was on mute again, so if we go for John Hawkins first, please. So four against or abstain, councillor Buffinger?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
Go on, could be a coward and say abstain for both, because both are equally as good.
Councillor Darby?
Abstain.
Councillor Epton?
Four.
Councillor Frost?
Four.
Councillor Gould?
Four.
Councillor Grindel?
Abstain.
Oh Jess, is Jess gone or is she still there?
Yeah, Jess Hallam's gone to work.
Right, okay, thank you, Tim Hallam?
Abstain.
Hallam Davis?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Councillor Hawkins?
Oh, am I allowed to vote for myself?
You are indeed.
Okay, four.
Councillor Kearney?
Four.
Councillor McCrae?
I'm ever, sorry, I've got to abstain on this because I genuinely think they're both as good as each other. So it's quite difficult, isn't it?
Councillor Needham?
Four.
And councillor Patterson?
Four.
Thank you. If we do councillor Grindel next and I'll count up at the end. Councillor Buffinger?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
Abstain.
Councillor Darby?
Abstain.
Councillor Epton?
Abstain.
Councillor Frost?
Abstain.
Councillor Gould?
Against.
Councillor Grindel?
Four.
Oh, Jess isn't here. Tim Hallam?
Four.
Hallam Davis?
Four.
Hawkins?
Sorry, David, against.
Kearney?
Against.
McCrae?
I'm ever so sorry, I've got to abstain on this one.
Um, Needham?
Nothing personal, David, against.
Councillor Patterson?
Against.
Thank you. Just bear with me a second whilst I count. Okay, John Hawkins is appointed with eight votes for, against, three for David.
Thank you. And I suppose welcome to the Events, Arts and Heritage Committee, or whichever way around it goes. So, so thank you everybody for that. So the next item on the agenda is item 13, reports from residents on outside bodies to receive updates from councillors appointed by the council as representatives on outside bodies. And can, can I just thank the councillors that sent updates out via email? Because it does help. And I know it can't always be done like that, but it, it's really appreciated because it gives people the chance to, you know, to digest it away from the meeting and then obviously we do this bit here. So, so the first one is Digging. And let's see if I've got this right. This is councillor Hallam Davis.
That's correct, yes. And I enjoyed putting together that report and I hope everybody enjoyed reading it. It certainly, the process of going through writing the report actually helped me to clarify in my own mind how Digging work. I've always been an admirer of, a great admirer of what they do. But it was really helpful to focus my mind on, on getting, bringing, bringing myself up to speed about how they operate. Again, with Covid, you know, I've only been able to attend a couple of committees. And, and obviously we, we make phone calls and, and they're very communicative people, but I haven't been able to get up there. Which is one of the problems. So, yeah, it, it enabled me to ask the questions and bring myself up to speed. And I feel I know them all a great deal better and how the organisation works. And it's brilliant.
They're, they're an amazing organisation. And I think we've got councillor Buffinger has got his hand up and then it looks like, who's BB? Oh, Bob Brown, sorry. Yeah, so in that order, please.
Sorry, I've no idea how my hand went up there.
Okay, not a problem. And councillor Brown, is yours? No, you put it down again. Okay, so does anyone?
Yeah, well, it's on my, on my screen, it says I've not.
No, it's gone, it's gone off now. There must be a delay between where you are and Stapleford and over here. Okay, so, so thank you for that. And that's duly noted. So the next one, let's see if I get this right. Brockstow Women's Project, and I think it's councillor Sue Patterson.
Yep, yep, that's me. Yeah, I've had a couple of nice phone calls with Brockstow Women's Project. And they've sent me a brief written update that I will email out. She does say sorry and send in, in delaying it. So a couple of things that they'd like me to mention. AGM was held and a new chair, Rachel Riggs, was appointed. And new trustees voted on to the board. They've got a vacancy for CEO, which is currently out. So if you do see them posting that, if we could share it around as much as possible. Planning for awareness campaigns until Christmas underway, including the White Ribbon Event, which I know you went around with them, was it Wednesday or Thursday?
It was yesterday, whatever yesterday was.
Yeah.
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, so awareness campaign in Beeston and wellbeing focus in Stapleford. I'm going to the first meeting, which will be held online on November the 3rd. That's the first one that I've, you know, been allowed to attend. So I shall be attending that. And also, early discussions with them about holding a women's event somewhere in Stapleford when events are allowed to happen again. So yeah, that's what we're, we're talking about at the moment. So brief, but I shall know more for next time after I've attended a meeting.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll, as long as no one else is listening, I'll tell you, they actually said to me yesterday, they appreciate all your work and, and your support. But hopefully the other councillors haven't turned me saying that to you. So next, it's the Helpful Bureau, which I think is councillor Frost.
Yes, it's both me and John. I've actually emailed them earlier on this week to ask if there's anything they want to bring up to the actual council meeting today. I've not had a response from them as yet. I've been doing some fundraising for them. I've gotten two tickets to Cannonhole Farm. Also, it's looking like I'm getting a hotel booking for Cannonhole Farm for next year when Covid, touch wood, is a bit more under control because I can't do anything this year. I've also written over a hundred letters to different places asking again for fundraising. I've been in a couple of times to have a chat with them. And it just seems at the moment with the Covid, the way it is, as you can imagine, a lot of companies have pulled the horns in. But I'm just thankful for the people that have said that they'll be able to help us. And hopefully as well, I should be able to get some tickets for them from the deep, which I've got to talk to a manager about next month. And again, that'll be for next year because this year is, well, everything's up in the air, as everybody can imagine. But those are for their fundraising as they do. And I've said that I do quite a bit of that for them. So I managed to raise quite a bit for the year before. And this year I'm, I'm trying to do the best I can.
No, no, that's appreciated. And I'm, I'm sure we all appreciate all your work on that. Thank you. So the next, the next one is Stapleford Town Deal Executive Board, and that's councillor Kearney, please.
Yeah, hi everyone. I did send you all something on email a little bit earlier today. Quite long, appreciate many of you might not have had a chance to read that yet. So I'll sort of give a little bit of an overview of what's in it. And obviously we're coming towards the end of this and hopefully our bid will be submitted by the end of January 2021. The, there's, there's three main projects that are hopefully going forwards in that bid now. The first one that I want to talk about is the one that's probably the most pivotal to the bid, and that is the town centre regeneration project. And a lot of you might have heard about a community hub. That is really just one, one part of the town centre regeneration. The idea is that it would be more of a sort of a social entertainment space with community facilities attached to it. There is likely to be, well, the proposals contain provision for sort of new retail units, food and beverage units, business startup space to complement the development at the old police station. And really, the idea of that is that, that our high street is much longer than the average high street and much longer than the recommended length by about half a mile, which is probably affecting the footfall in Stapleford and the number of businesses that are actually getting custom. So what, what the idea is, is that we may be able to condense the length of the high street, but sort of at the same time not disadvantaging businesses at the further end. Because they will hopefully have the opportunity to move into some of the newer retail units that, that will be part of the development. It also gives us an opportunity to expand our public realm. Would hopefully be a sort of a town plaza and some more car parking and sort of provide a flexible space where we can have different events, outdoor theatre, maybe seasonal markets, or maybe even a regular market. And going forward, there have been, there has, there has been sort of the, the concept of quarters of Stapleford, for example, the business quarter or the entertainment quarter, being something of a longer term visi- vision for Stapleford. So that we can sort of, so that through those different, through those different quarters, we're attracting different demographics of people into the town. So that's a sort of an overview of that project. And obviously, as I say, that is the one that has the most economic value, direct economic value to the, to the project. And so it's, it's, it's pretty pivot, pivotal to, to the bid. The next one is a community leisure and youth facility, which is sort of, it, it's more of an indirect link to the economy. Hopefully will eventually incorporate youth services in Stapleford. Obviously, that's, that's sort of a, something that needs to be discussed and looked at and the different options sort of hashed out before anything is agreed upon. But hopefully that, that would be something that would facilitate. And I suppose the idea of that is that it would be something more central, there'd be something with outdoor space involved. And it would give youth workers an opportunity to engage with young people that might not necessarily always want to go into a youth centre, but maybe are happy to use the outdoor space. And it gives the youth workers that opportunity to engage with those young people and, and sort of introduce them to the different education and learning opportunities or the different work opportunities that, that might be available to them. And I think one of the things that we've really discussed a lot at the town council with regard to HS2 in particular, is that what we want is we want jobs from HS2 to go to local people wherever possible. And hopefully that, that will sort of help in that, in that regard, to have that sort of link with the young people enhanced. Obviously, there's a, a health aspect to that and a community cohesion aspect to that. And I think both of those things have positive, albeit indirect links to the economy. The third project is the cycle track networks. I'm a little bit reluctant to say too much about these. And the reason for that is that they have, sort of halfway through this project, there have been new guidelines issued by the government on cycle track infrastructure design. So the plans for that are sort of, are, are sort of being changed and amended. So I don't want to give too much information on that. But if you, if you do want to have a look at the report that I sent out earlier, and I'm sure that the town clerk will put this on the website for any members of the public who are watching that want to have a look. I have linked in there the particular government guidance that's been issued in July with regard to cycle track networks. And I've also just done a bit of a copy and paste for what's, of what's on the Brockstow Borough Council website with regard to the cycle tracks at the moment. Just because I think that's probably a, a better way to get an overview of what we're doing without me telling you something that's going to be changed in three months. So I hope, I hope that's okay for the cycle networks for everybody. With regards to skills infrastructure, this has come up a couple of times during the project. We're currently looking at whether this is something that's viable to include in the bid. We'll have to consider whether competition from other nearby bids might be an issue and whether it would be beneficial to the town, given the proximity of skills hubs that already exist with regards to HS2. But obviously, this doesn't necessarily just have to be a HS2 skills hub. So there are discussions going on about that at the executive board. I'll update on this sort of further down the line. It is something that I would like to see, but whether or not it's viable or not, obviously we'll have to, to wait and see. And even if it's, if, if the executive board decides it's not viable for this bid, you know, it's, it's something maybe that the town council could look at if councillors were keen. There've been, a couple of people had sort of spoken to me about public participation and the fact that they'd not been sure about the stakeholder meetings and whether they were still continuing. Because they'd not been receiving the invitations. And I don't think the town council have been getting them either. So I have spoken to Rebecca Ogden about this. She said they have continued online and she's, from now on, she's going to send the link for the stakeholder meetings directly to me and I will distribute them. And hopefully she's also going to be sending them to the town clerk, just to make sure that we've got all bases covered. I know some people had signed up directly for the invitations to go to them to be on the mailing list for that. But that's somehow, that's sort of not, not happened once, once the meetings have gone online. We have continued though to, to, to consult with the general public. And there have been a number of public participations, public participation activities that have been available for people to complete online. Again, there is also one out at the minute, which the, the government have actually put together. I've linked that again in the document that I've got here, which I can actually probably post that link in the chat bar for anybody in the public that wants to have a look at that link. And I'm sure again, the clerk will post that on the website. And then the last thing that I really wanted to talk about was the town councillor stakeholders. There is a provision within the prospectus for town, for the towns for, for major stakeholders to make a contribution to the project. The guidelines are a little bit on the vague side. I know that councillor Needham has approached the MCHLG on my behalf, just to inquire as to, you know, what kind of thing that they would expect. They haven't really come back with anything. I don't think they've come back with anything at all. They don't offer, the guidelines don't offer any idea of quality or quantity. They don't offer any idea of whether this should be monetary or non-monetary. And so therefore, I suppose it could be monetary, it could not be monetary, or it could be a direct monetary contribution or an indirect monetary contribution. So that's something that we will have to look at as a town councillor. And I will be presenting some proposals to council in November, following consultation with the borough. I would however, welcome any thoughts that you as town councillors have on this and how it might manifest. If you would like to share any thoughts that you have got with me, I'd be grateful if you could do so by Friday, the 30th of October in the morning as well, but sort of by midday preferably. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. That's appreciated. It looks like there's a answer here, is it? Councillor Brown and then councillor Tim Hallam.
Oh, sorry Ella, I'll, I'll do it via the chat. I was just going to suggest a couple of things, something about Sustrans and something called Slow Ways. But so I won't bring it up here, but it's just something to consider in amongst your, 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 your roots.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Or, or pop it to me in an email. That would be brilliant.
Okay.
Thank you. And councillor Tim Hallam?
Thanks. Really enjoyed reading this report. And I want to say, I want to say thanks very much to councillor Kearney for, as, as, as this council and lots of other people know, I'm involved behind the scenes. Because, because we get regular reports to the Jobs and Economy Committee on the, on the borough about the progress. And, and I think that this is a really excellent summary of the progress. And, you know, I'm excited by the, by the, the bid and the way it's taking shape. And I think that enthusiasm that Ella has has, has come, has come through in this report as well. The only thing that I would, that I would add is the successful early award of half a million pounds to be able to make the investments that, that lead, that lead on in, in advance of the, the, the main 25 million submission. There's been a lot of questions that I've had recently from members of the public that have been asking whether that half a million that was widely publicised is a part of the 25 million or whether it's in, in, in front of the 25 million or whether it's for something separate entirely. The middle one that I just said there. It's, I can definitely confirm that. It's, it's so, so ultimately, if we're successful with the 25 million. um if we're successful with the 25 million bid, we'll actually get 25 and a half million. Because we've already had the first half, which is obviously great news. So, thanks.
Uh. Thank you. Councillor Grindel.
Yes, uh thank you, Mr Mayor. Um. First of all, yes, I, I think this report that, that councillor Kearney has put together is very good. Now, as she knows as well as I do, that um when we first started on the executive board, there are, there were lots of aspirations of what things we would like and and the public's been asked, of course. Um. And obviously, we've had to narrow quite a bit down. I think truthfully that um we've got November, December and January to go, which is not a lot of time. There's still a lot of creases to be ironed out. Um. And obviously, obviously, the aspirations that I have, which some councillors know um is a variety for the town. Um. Obviously, if you're looking at making the, shall we say, the town smaller. Eventually, hopefully, that will grow because of hopefully HS2. But we'll have to see about that. But um, yes, there's going to be a few headaches over the next three months. And I don't mean Christmas and New Year's Eve on this project. Um. If we get what the majority of us would like to see on the executive, and I hope that everyone eventually will enjoy reading the plan that's been, once it's submitted. Um. Will be happy. But yes, we have a lot of areas which Ella has spoke about. Um. That might not come up right away. Um. We might have to build on these things over the years. Once we get the bid, then we need to build bigger on it. So it is a very strange time for us at the moment on exec because we're all there to get the same thing. We want the bid to go through. We want, we want the money. Give us the money. And obviously, that 25 and a half million that Tim has just mentioned, um we hope to bring in a lot more money from other, other stakeholders. That's what it's all about. So uh once again, thanks Ellie. And um couldn't put it better myself. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. And did Ella want, did, did your hand come up? Sorry, my chair's creaking. Uh councillor Kearney, did you want to come back on anything there before we move on? My, it's okay. I thought, I thought your hand was up. Sorry. Okay. So yeah, thank, thank you everybody for that.
No, sorry, Mr Mayor. It actually wasn't. I was on mute. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Go on then, start again.
Yeah, I just wanted to very quickly come back. Um. Very remiss of me to miss out the accelerated funding, Tim. Thanks for pointing it out. Um. Yeah, the accelerated funding is, is, as Tim said, it's sort of a, a bit of money to get us going on one of the projects um that we've already, that we've already sort of um discussed with, with the government. So um they were obviously impressed with that particular project and decided that they'd grant us that money. So yeah, that's, that's really brilliant news as well. And then just as well, just to come back on David's point about the, the sort of, the, the town centre expanding. Um. Yeah, I think I probably didn't quite get that across very well in my report, but um really, the idea, obviously, as David said, is to sort of condense the town centre initially, and then hopefully that will naturally expand into the different quarters. Um. And, and we'll have, we'll have some control, obviously, in planning um how those sort of pan out as well. So yes, that's the idea, is a sort of initial condensing of the town centre and then, and then a, a sort of an expansion uh slowly over time, not, nothing too quickly, because obviously, we don't want it to grow too fast and sort of back in the same situation. But a slow growth over time.
Thank you. It's nice to see money actually coming to Stapleford change, isn't it? Instead of Beeston all the time. Stapleford's always been a bad place. Um. So yeah, tha- thank you everyone for that report. So that, that was really nice. And I'm, I'm sure everyone appreciated it. And I hope that if anyone's watching it now or watches it later on YouTube, that they also appreciate them as well. Um. So the next item on the agenda is consultation by Brockstowe Borough Council on HS2 Toten Master Plan. And it's to consider a request from the leader of the Borough Council to assist with publicising their consultation by holding an event. Um. As I said earlier, I'd declare an interest in that because I have been involved with the HS2 Toten Master Plan. I've been on some committee meetings, so I, I will just keep my mouth shut on this one and, and let you lot get on with it. So, so over to the town clerk, I suppose.
Uh. Thanks Chair. I'm, I've not really got anything to say about this. I think everybody's seen the consultation that's come out um over the um beginning of the week. Uh. And it, it was just really to, to see if council were happy to assist as requested.
Okay, we've got councillor Tim Hallam and then councillor Grindel, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Um. I was, I'm involved with this on the, on the borough side. And um, and I think it's, it's very good of councillor Radulovich to, to um offer for the, for Stapleford to get involved. Because as he pointed out, not going to try and paraphrase anything because I couldn't put it across, across anywhere near as eloquently as Milan. Um. But, but it's going to affect Stapleford in a, in a big way. And, and it's, so it's great for the town council to be involved as well. My uh concern with the sort of two organisations running the consultation is one of duplicated effort and overlap. I don't like inefficiency. That may have come across. So um, so I had a little chat with Milan yesterday about how we could um, you know, sh- share that love um without duplicating efforts and, and stepping on toes or, or God forbid, creating contradictory messages. And, and I think the, what I would, what I would advise to, to, to this council would be that the, the Covid makes consultation really, really difficult. And um, and the borough have already spent a reasonable amount of money um working with consultants to, to generate the um, the platform for online consultation that's needed in this pandemic environment. Um. So I don't think there'd be any reason to duplicate that. And I don't think Stapleford would be able to match the resources necessary to duplicate that. Um. What Stapleford Town Council does have is a very good network of local stakeholders. Um. And my suggestion would be to utilise our network, our contacts, to, to create our own internal stakeholder consultation, rather than the public, leave the public, get up to the borough. And um, and that way, it will be, the way I would present it, if I were selling a, selling it to a local stakeholder like a voluntary sector organisation or a business that we, that we have dealings with, would be to say, listen, you can, you can make your own submission on the, on the website. Here's the, here's the details. And you know, we'd encourage you to do so. But we as a town council would like to support whatever you say with, with our weight, the weight of our organisation as well. So, so if you work with us, we'll, we'll put together, you know, not detracting from your own ability to put your own message forward, organisation, but you know, we'll supplement that as well. Um. Come and work with us and we'll bang out some ideas of, of what that, what that shared submission via the town council is going to be. I think that would, you know, be really, really effective. Thanks.
But thank you. Councillor Grindel.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Actually, uh Tim, I think Tim is correct because um I've spoken to Milan and it seems to be, that would be the best way of doing it. Obviously, the organisations in Stapleford can contribute a lot to it, I'm sure. And um I hope that every councillor here um who belongs to different organisations throughout the town um will actually contact them and, and tell them exactly what is what. And, and ask them to um get on the site and make their minds about what they would like to see. And I think that's the best way to do it. It is expensive. And you know me, I don't like spending money. Uh. People's money, I mean. Um. So yeah, that'd be a good way of doing it.
Uh. Thank you councillor Grindel. Um councillor Needham, please.
Hi, thanks. Um. Just to speed this up then, because I appreciate time's getting on. Um. I'm, I'm happy with the idea of engaging our stakeholders that we, we engage with a lot. Um. I think it might be an idea then to refer this to the events committee because I think in the arranging of events, I know Sue especially and probably Richard has got loads of contacts. Um. So I think the events committee could probably get their heads together and come up with a list of key contacts of people that we'd like to put this out to and get feedback from. So can, can I suggest that we do that as an approach of dealing with this?
I'll, I'll second that. If that's a proposal, Theresa, I'll, I'll second that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a proposal, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that means we're going to have to vote on it. Are we doing a vote of, by exception on that one? Is that, is that, are you happy with that, the town clerks? Oh, I can see her. She's up there again now. Are, are you happy with that, Sabrina?
Yes, that's fine by me, Chair.
Okay, so an- anybody against? And any, I hope Theresa Anne popped up. I'm sure it's not for against. Uh. Anybody abstaining? Okay, so that, that's going to be moved to the, I, I'm assuming it will be the next meeting of the events committee. That will be banged on the agenda for that. And then you, you'll get that in due course. So, so thank you, everybody. Okay, so item number 15 on the agenda is a notice of motion, relocation of Stapleford Town Council. That's been proposed by councillor Tim Hallam and seconded by councillor David Grindel. So I suppose the right thing to do is the proposer, I suppose, if you want to speak on that before it's opened up to anybody.
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Um. I'd like to, to make a, a little change to this. I'd like to propose a, an amendment to, to my own motion, because a lot of time has passed since I wrote this. Um. You'll remember that, that you very kindly um supported me in, in referring it back to the next meeting at the, at the last meeting of the town council because time was getting on. Um. The, so the urgency is not as hot as when I wrote this. And I might have written this a little bit more assertively than if I were to rewrite it again today on that basis. So the, the recommendation in part two, um I'd like it to, to read a, um, an update um shall be given to, to the next meeting of this council detailing the progress of negotiations, uh full stop. So that's, uh, because I think, you know, when, when there's no sense of urgency, there is absolutely no reason. It would be vastly unfair to, to say, yeah, to say, right, um Sabrina, drop everything. Rebecca from, from Brockstowe, drop everything. Um Zolf, you know, or whoever else is involved in that. Um. So, so that's it. Now you've, you can all, you can all read it. And I know that, I know there are a lot of opinions. It's a bit of a, bit of a marmite thing. Um. So, so I just want to clarify a, a couple of, couple of points. I've tried not to be prescriptive with, with this. I, my personal opinion is that the current location of Stapleford Town Council isn't fit for purpose. I think that it was designed as a library. And after a period of time, it was not fit for purpose as a library anymore. And so the community got a brand new library and the, and that's what we've, and that's what's still serving the community to this day. I, the, you know, it was, it was an opportunity when, for the town council to take over the, the building. Uh. But it was never designed as a council. And it certainly supports our, the climate emergency to, to, to look at how inefficient the Carnegie is, how much money it would cost to make it um energy efficient and, and support the carbon neutrality that we're going for. The, whereas, whereas the opportunity that the Towns Deal presents to, to potentially move into the community hub um centre focus position, surrounded by lots of retail and bustle and and be front and centre in that, to me, is a really attractive one. Um. But I don't want to be prescriptive on this because this is a motion to enable that negotiation and give this council's blessing to Sabrina as the proper officer to go to negotiate with officers at the borough and see what sort of ideas, what sort of relationship could be built on the basis of a hopefully successful Stapleford Town Deal bid. Now, so many uncertainties on this at the moment. We don't know whether we're going to get the money from the Towns Deal bid. Um. We don't know what the delivery structure for any shared combined assets that, that are constructed with that money uh will be. All of these things are yet to be resolved. And it's, it's too early and it'd be somewhat presumptuous to, to start making those plans now when we haven't even got the cash. That's, that's almost like inviting trouble, isn't it? So, um, so really, I, I've tried to keep this, I've tried to keep this pretty open. Um. And it's only to say, to say, please do go and get the feels for it. Um. So that we can get some ideas presented back to this town council for us to, to properly debate and mull over. Um. So, so, so great. Very similar to what councillor Kearney said um at the end of her report about the Stapleford Town Deal as well. Looks like we're pointing in the same direction. Um. Let's have conversations. Let's have ideas. Let's, let's not rule anything out. Um. So, so yeah, that's, that, that pretty much wraps it up. But I'd be very happy through you, Chair, to take, to take any questions that people might have about this motion.
Okay, it looks like we've got councillor Grindel's hands up to start with.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Yes, um, um. Obviously, um, when this came before, I was um a bit apprehensive. At this time, I'm not so, I'm not apprehensive at all. I think it's right that Stapleford Town Council should send um our town clerk um to find out more information, find out exactly what uh the council want, um what information she's going to come back with. Um. It's really all to do with the future of, of the town, of course, and the council. And it's all to do with it's all to do with what we can get um support for um from the um town clerk who will obviously get in contact with the Borough Council. So really, this is a, this is an outline plan to go forward and to let the town clerk um bring the information back to us. Let each member of the council decide exactly where we want to go and take it from there. Thank you.
And that's appreciated. Thank you. Has anyone else got any questions or comments or anything to raise on here?
Uh councillor Needham's hands up, Chair.
Uh councillor Needham. Yep, I can see it in the middle now.
Thank you. Um. Yes, I, I, I see councillor Hallam's point about us having a stake in this. Um. I'm not against us having a stake in this at all. I think it is right that we, um if with this as being such a big thing for Stapleford, that we should get involved in it. I am obviously concerned about the size of the stake though, because the motion does still stay with the aim of contributing the Carnegie or its equivalent value. Now, I, I know that there's been some crude valuations of the Carnegie done, but we don't actually know what it's worth. And when we consider that as a percentage of our precept, um it's pretty huge. Um. It's, it's a bit rich for me um at this stage. I'd like to know more information about what that would buy us. Um. I think really, I would like the prescriptive nature of the value that we want to add to the uh project to be removed. I'm happy to contribute. And I think, you know, we're all probably happy to contribute. But I don't think it should say exactly how much at this stage, because we don't know what the project is exactly and what it will return to us. Um. I also take councillor Hallam's point about, um, you know, moving. But having attended some of the stakeholder meetings, I don't really recall anybody saying that they were desperate to have the town council on the High Street, as lovely as we are. Um. We're taking a bit of space out of what is a prime commercial area that we're trying to attract business to. I'm not sure what investment would be attracted to the town council moving to the High Street. I take the point about us being more visible, but that's kind of self-serving to the council. And when we think about it, Beeston, I am, you know, Beeston, um in the Brockstowe Centre in Beeston isn't actually on the High Street because it's just behind a car park. So it's not an essential thing for us to be on the High Street. Um. I am actually really excited about the proposal. I think the way it's looking like a venue and, and all that sort of stuff, it is exciting. I wouldn't want to compromise the design or what people have asked for by stipulating a requirement to house a town council in there. I think there is potential for the, the community hub to actually I think there is potential for the community hub to actually try and be too many things at the same time, and actually you lose some of the essence of what we're actually trying to provide to the community. I'm happy that, you know, obviously we've got ambitious plans, and it might be that eventually, yes, there is space within that facility that we do want to occupy. Brilliant, great, let's move part of the way on there. But I don't think we should plan just yet to completely up and move and take everything that we've got into that building when we don't really have the designs yet, we don't know what space we're going to have, we don't know what rental is. And I know these are all details, but at this point, to say, yeah, we're going to definitely up and leave, and we should start negotiating that, feels wrong to me. So that's my two penneth, and I will hand over to somebody else.
Okay, now that's appreciated. Thank you, councillor Kearney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just largely in agreement with councillor Needham there. First of all, I want to be clear that I'm not entirely against relocating town council services if and when we outgrow the Carnegie Centre, but I don't support the idea of selling the property on because it is revenue generating. It already generates revenue for us and has the potential to generate more revenue in the future. And we've kind of just sort of agreed to look into that at, with regard to when we voted on the corporate plan earlier. And I think that that really should take the priority. Again, the sort of the description in there of the community hub is not sort of wholly representative of the wider project. I'm a little bit worried that the motion suggests that this would be a revenue generating premises that we would be moving into. In August, I had a meeting with Rebecca Ogden and councillor Needham before this motion even came to council, actually, because we wanted to talk about what possible terms might be, you know, might be available to us. And what we actually learned was that we would have to pay to rent out a room every time we wanted to have a council or a committee meeting, every time the clerk needed to have a discussion with a member of staff in private. If we needed additional office space, we would have to rent that out, and in effect, all we would really be getting would be a front desk, and we'd be losing the privacy of the office that we would already have. I think with plans to expand the service provision that we've sort of talked about tonight, I think that this option is sort of even less viable now than it was when it was first presented. I'm not convinced that the preamble of the resolution to this motion is entirely accurate, and it would worry me that we would be voting on this motion tonight with the preamble as it was, as it is. And I think not only would we be paying to rent the space from the Borough, we'd be losing revenue that we already generate from leasing our offices and the annex, and from the casual lettings we host as well. The Carnegie really is our only asset. We have the allotments, but we're effectively caretakers of the allotments. We have no power to use any of the revenue we generate from them on anything other than the allotments. And if the town council were ever to be not in existence, then that ownership would presumably transfer to the Borough Council to look after them. So we really are only caretakers, and the Carnegie Centre really is our only asset. As I said, it's already revenue generating. And I think that what we're being asked to do in this motion is a little bit reckless. We're being asked to commit to offering up an unknown sum of money to the Borough Council, a sum of money that we might later find that we can't afford, because we don't know what it is yet, that would then force us into selling the Carnegie Centre when we might not actually want to do that. We've not had the building valued, and that's not even part of the resolution. I think it would have been more prudent to ask council to carry out that action before presenting this motion. I think another thing, it's a bit of an elephant in the room. I am concerned that although Mr Jenrick might have recently made clear that local government reform is not his priority at the moment, I think that it is a direction that the government are looking to move in in the future, and I think the possibility of us ending up as a unitary authority in Nottinghamshire can't be ignored. We've kind of got to future-proof any plans that we make, and it concerns me that we're, that we might end up sharing the facility with an unknown landlord and on unknown terms if this property is passed over to the county council or a unitary authority and they decide not to keep it. Terms that we might not be able to afford and that we might not want to agree to, and not having any revenue generating ability to sort of relocate ourselves. And I think that puts the town council in a tenuous position. I think as an analogy, I feel like the motion is the equivalent of asking somebody to sell off their mortgage-free home as a deposit to rent a small space in someone else's house. I'm a little bit saddened that councillor Hallam didn't kind of ever come and sort of discuss this with me directly as the representative on the executive board. I would have been happy to have a conversation with him about it. I think for me, there are far too many variables to the final outcome of voting in favour of this motion. There are too many loopholes and loose ends. I won't be supporting the motion this evening. I would urge other councillors to do the same and wait for the board inform proposals to be presented to council at the next full council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And I suppose, Tim, do you need to come back and summarise or whatever you call it before?
Yeah, I'd like to come back. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm disappointed somewhat to hear councillor Kearney's negative attitude to this. It's a real shame, because, you know, there's a principle going on with a lot of what we've done on this council recently, including the successful adoption of the corporate plan today, where those early parts of the conversation leading up to that, a lot of things were unknown, a lot of things were speculative, and, you know, we all worked through that on the basis of, let's not rule anything out, let's keep our options open. So I would advise people to keep that open mind. This is not actually a prescriptive motion. It's only asking for negotiations. Councillor Kearney raised that the, it wouldn't be generating revenue, and it would actually be costing money. The, Ms Ogden at the Borough doesn't know that at this point. That's as speculative as a lot of stuff that councillor Kearney said. So really and truly, that's not known. So, but what I do know is this, you've got to be in it to win it. Whatever negotiation happens for the shared assets that come out of the Stapleford Towns bid, and that will be the combined sports youth services facility and the combined town centre facility, those are going to be owned by some entity. And the realistic thing that I think is likely to happen on this is that it will probably be a board, either charitable or a CIC, that's created to manage, look after and deal with the revenue generated from these shared assets, because some of it will belong to central government, because they've essentially bought it. Some of it will belong to Brockstow, because they will have sacrificed elements of their own land and made their own financial contributions towards the project. So it would obviously, the only way that this council is going to be a part of the negotiations to determine how much revenue each of those organisations can take out of it, what the delivery mechanism will be, what the management mechanism will be, will be to engage in the conversations at this stage, and certainly before the bid is submitted, to then say, "We are open and conversing on this, and we want to have a seat at the table." You're not going to get that seat at the table by virtue of being Stapleford Town Council. You're only going to get that seat at the table by virtue of having said, "We are willing to put something in." And so I would, councillor Needham said that the actual value was a little prescriptive, and I'm happy to take that out. I will, I'll ask, with your permission, Mr Mayor, I'd come back to councillor Needham and ask whether she's happy with this as a change.
Oh, you're summarising, so you say what you want, and then we'll take it to the vote.
With the aim of contributing the Carnegie Centre or its equivalent value and the remainder of that sentence, I'm happy to take that bit out and replace it with consideration given to a potential new premises for Stapleford Town Council. And that way, and honestly, if the negotiations come out dire, there's no commitment made.
Someone's got the microphone on there, and it sounds a bit loud in the background.
Well, Mr Mayor, it's me actually, councillor McGrath. Obviously, first of all, I'd like to-
Sorry, we've done all the talking on this one now. He's summarised it, so we're going to go to the vote in a second.
Well, I'm just asking, can I speak? Right, because obviously, so we need to-
So, sorry, councillor McGrath, we've already done all that bit. Everyone was given the opportunity to speak, and-
Councillor-
Mr Mayor. So we're going to the vote.
Hold on. No question about that, mate. Am I allowed to speak? So can we ask the town clerk, please?
It's up to the mayor as the lead on the meeting, as he said. Hello, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got a bad connection again. It's up to the mayor as to who is allowed to speak and who isn't. It's his final say.
Yeah, everyone's done the questions and the speaking and that, and then we did give everyone the opportunity to speak. Then we went back to councillor Hallam to summarise, so now that's done, and it's time to go to the vote on that one, otherwise we're going to be here all night.
Well, I haven't quite done yet, Mr Mayor, although it won't be long. I did get interrupted.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Sorry, sorry, Tim. Sorry, councillor Hallam. So you're not allowing me to speak at all?
No, we've done all that.
No, you're not allowing me to speak? Sorry, Mr Mayor. You're not allowing me to speak on what you're proposing?
That's already been done. If you're late joining the-
No, I do apologise, because obviously I've had the business and all that, but you're not allowing me to speak? So can we record that? Can we record that, please?
I'm saying we're doing it in order, and everyone's been given-
Excuse me. Can we record that, that you are not allowing me to speak?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the meeting's been done in order. Everybody was given the opportunity to speak, which they did do, and then we went back to summarise the meeting, summarise up, and that's what councillor Hallam's doing now.
But you're not allowing me to speak?
If you can let him finish summarising what he's got to say, then we're moving to the vote.
Well, we get to speak on the amendment, though, Mr Mayor, because I think this is highly irregular. There's been two or three people spoken on this at the most. I think it's such a major issue, a major decision for the town council to be making, for us to be stopping councillors from speaking to it, I think is pretty appalling.
I agree, councillor Kearney.
Nobody's being stopped from speaking, but we're trying to do things in order. So Tim's actually coming to summarise, but then if you want to speak on what he's changing it to, then I think that's the fair thing to do. So if you want to finish doing your bit, Tim, and then once you've changed it to what you want to say, then obviously we need people, councillors can then speak on that.
Yeah, by all means, by all means. I mean, I'm happy to, I don't know what they, to be honest, I'm not familiar with what Stapleford Town Council's standing orders are on, you know, amending your own motion, because I haven't actually formally proposed this yet. I think that it's probably, it probably doesn't need the formal amendment procedure to go through, although I do agree with councillor Kearney that this is a big issue, and, you know, obviously at your discretion, Chair, because it's nothing to do with me. Just because it's my motion doesn't make it my meeting from this point. So, but I'd be happy to have a bit more bounce back on this, and because it's fluid, and, you know, and it's a big deal.
Okay, so if we let councillor McGrath go first, then, and then we'll go to councillor Needham and then councillor Kearney, I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I do apologise for being late, so whatever. Obviously, the current restrictions are causing me major problems, which I did bring up at the Borough, right? Which I've still had no response from, but I'm sure Borough councillors are listening as well. But on this, Tim, which I've read, what concerns me is, again, we're trying to push things forward when we're not certain which way any of us are going. So to bring a motion forward again so quick, when we're all unsure which way Stapleford, Nottinghamshire, anywhere's going, right? Why are we basically arguing about things that we don't know or we're unsure about just to make something move on? I think, again, well, I'm going to ask you, can we remove the motion to be more certain about what the politics are, if we're going to get the money, if we're not going to get the money, by moving the town hall again and taking, as the leader of the council said, a prime bit of land, if, again, we get that land, no one's, it's still uncertain, a prime bit of land out of what we want for retail and this, that and the other, why start moving things forward till any of us are sure what's going on? I mean, that's my concern, but that's just me speaking, either sensible. We're looking at a time now where we're highly likely, as we're carrying on through this, that there might be probably four or five shops in Stapleford, without thinking about getting rid of the central point before we know what we're going into. That's my belief, and obviously, unless some of you know, I've spoken to the MP about this, I've spoken to quite a few things, and not about the basic town deal, but this is something that, to me, seems a bit trivia when we don't know our future yet. Hopefully, it's bright, but we need to be thinking about what we need to do as a community before, as I think the mayor said it there, it's nearly three and a half hours now, or three hours that we've all been talking, and we seem to be going on and on about things that don't really matter, well, do matter, sorry, that there's more prevalent things that are happening in our community that we need to be dealing with, and not the Stapleford Carnegie.
Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Needham, I think, was next.
Okay, obviously, I'm just thinking about how we could amend, you know, because Tim started to amend this, and then we digressed. I think if we took out so that the part I is the town clerk is instructed to cooperatively and proactively negotiate with representatives of Brockstow Borough Council and the Stapleford Town Deal Executive Board with the aim of cut the next bit out and then putting a stake in the share in the new community hub facility. So we don't say how much it is and what it is, that we're just going to say we're going to proactively have a talk in that. And then, obviously, with the preamble, we need to change that a little bit, I think. So the first paragraph, fine. I think we don't necessarily need the third paragraph at all, because that's, yeah, okay, if we can remove the third paragraph, and then if we can change the second paragraph to say something along the lines of, "We believe that Stapleford Town Council could potentially relocate to the combined facility." So we're not saying we definitely will, but we're not ruling it out in some way, shape or form, then I'd be happy with it.
Can I come back, Mr Mayor?
Okay, let councillor Kearney- Okay, let councillor Kearney go first, because she has been waiting a while and then we'll come back to you, um, councillor Hallam.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I just want to clarify really that we have already got a seat at the table. Um, I'm the representative, the elected representative on the board and I am already having conversations with the Borough. Um, about proposals that I can bring back to town council. None of, none of the ideas that come up at the, at, at that meeting, um, that, that's coming up will be excluded from the proposals. And if you don't trust me on that, Tim, you're more than welcome to check with Ruth. Uh, because that's who the meeting will be with. Um, but I won't be excluding any of the options that come up at that meeting from my proposals. And I really would like council to wait for those proposals to come in November. This does not present anything close to all of the different options that we have in terms of the stake that we could put in. Um, and I'm, I'm disappointed that it's come to council in the state that it's in, because I, I don't think it's a suitable motion. And I don't think I'll be voting with it, even with the amendments.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Frost?
Yes, sorry about that. I just had to click the button. I couldn't find it for a second. I think in the state it is now, and with everybody trying to make amendments, Tim included and everybody else, it's best to be taken off, reworked, put back on. Because at the moment, it's a complete, we don't know what it is, even with the changes going one way or another. And I think it would be best suited if it was taken off and then brought back. So my amendment, if I'm allowed to do this, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, is that, uh, this motion is taken off and rebought back after November, uh, after that information would be brought back on November, the meeting. And I think then we'll all know where we stand and what we're doing. But that's just my own motion. It's up to anybody else to do on second it.
Thank you. Okay. And councillor Gould, I think, I just saw your hand pop up. And then it's councillor Patterson, if that's the right order.
I, I agree with, with Simon. Um, I think this should be taken off and revisited at some other time. Um, I'm not in favour of it. I will not vote, vote for it. So, um, that, that's all I have to say on the matter.
You're, you're second in Simon's proposal, yeah?
I will.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So where's the town clerk on? Do we need to do that now or do we need to talk to the other councillors and then come back to that or?
I, I think, uh, just carry on talking to people and we'll, we'll sort it all out at the end if that's okay.
Okay, so it looks like it's councillor Bran next anyway, and then I think it's back to councillor Hallam.
Ah, yes, I mean, the Carnegie Centre is ours. Dan, relax, as you know, and I've learned this in the last administration, that it was bought, it was ours, it's ours to keep. However, um, it's a, it's quite a lovely building, but it is old, it is going to crumble, it's going to cost us more and more each year, it's not ecological. You know, we can't say we're, we're going for green initiatives and, and environmental protection without thinking that that building might not, um, fill that brief. So I think we've got to keep all ideas open.
Okay, councillor Hallam?
Thanks. Um, just a, yeah, just a couple of, a couple of points to, that have been raised then. Um, councillor Kearney's the, um, representative of this council, uh, on the board that has authority to submit the bid. That does not automatically give us a seat at the table, uh, after the bid is successful. Um, I would imagine very much that the, that whatever new board structure is created will be built of its shareholders, rather than all the people that contributed, of which there are many, to the, to the, to the submission of the bid that, cross our fingers, is successful. So, uh, so I don't think, I don't think being there now is a, is a, is an automatic invite to, to be there later. Um, I'm sort of uncomfortable, but willing to go along with, um, with councillor Needham's suggestion about removing some of the preamble. I mean, the, the reality is the preamble is my words, seconded by councillor Grindel. That's not what this council is asking, is being asked to resolve. So, you know, asking, asking me to change my, to change my words as to why I think that the, um, council should resolve this, doesn't leave me feeling very comfortable, because that feels a bit gaggy. But, um, I'm willing to do it if it, if it makes it more palatable to people. Um, so, so yeah, I will, I'll happily accept councillor Needham's suggestion. I won't automatically, um, go along with councillor Frost's motion to push back. Although I think that's better than, uh, that's a better alternative than voting this down, because whether we do it today or whether we do it another day, um, we cannot miss this opportunity to, to stake our claim in the, uh, potential, the, successful outcome.
Okay, so has councillor Hallam got a hand up there by the looks of it?
Uh, councillor Patterson has her hand up.
Sorry, it was, wasn't it? It was councillor Patterson at the bottom. Everything keeps moving around and then it looks like councillor Needham afterwards, please.
Yeah, I think, um, obviously, um, Si's motion, his amendment was put forward and seconded. Um, and at this point, I think I'm really uncomfortable, um, with this. I can't support anything that puts the Carnegie up for sale. I'm quite happy, um, to have discussions with the Borough. Um, I mean, I sat in on a Borough meeting recently where they were talking about leisure facilities and the plan and everything that was put forward to them in great detail. Um, about how much they would be spending on said buildings, how much it would cost to redevelop, how much it would cost to knock down, um, and rebuild was all put forward. We've basically got about five lines asking us to sell an asset to put into something else that we know nothing about. So at this point, um, I think this should be removed. Um, and if it is brought forward, uh, any future meetings that reference to the Carnegie Centre, um, is removed.
Okay, so is it councillor Needham and then it's back to councillor Tim and then we do need to start voting on things, don't we?
Okay, sorry, I hate to do this as the green, because it has been brought up about, um, energy efficiency. Um, I'm not quite sure, because I don't know the details of the plan. I assume that the plan is to knock down whatever space is being used and then rebuild something. Um, I will have to say that regardless of how energy efficient it is, the carbon footprint of doing that will be higher. It is always better in terms of carbon footprint to renovate a building rather than rebuild from scratch. Because it has been shown that even the most energy efficient two-bedroom household can take up to 80 years to be carbon offsetted. So I'd hate to do the green thing, but because it kept coming up, I just wanted to clarify that point. But that isn't the reason I'm making this decision or whatever. It's just, just for clarification.
Cut off before you'd finished. All right, thank you. So is, is that councillor Hallam?
Yeah, thanks. Just, I just wanted to come on another thing. Um, councillor, councillor Kearney seems to, um, seems to be under the impression, uh, that being the town council representative on the Stapleford Board, um, gives her delegated, delegated authority to negotiate on behalf of this Borough, um, with another council. Um, no councillor, as we already know, uh, because the town clerk's pointed this out before, no councillor can be granted delegated powers. So in order to, in order to have whatever future negotiations, I think most people are, are, are accepting of the fact that some sort of negotiations to, to how much this council will want to get involved in the, in the result of the Stapleford bid need to happen. Um, this motion does, um, make a, essentially a, a grant of, of delegated authority for the town clerk as the proper officer to do that. Um, councillor Kearney cannot be granted authority to do that on our behalf. So we'd need a similar kind of motion to allow Sabrina to go and do that on our behalf.
Point of clarity, please, Chair. I've never said that I'm entering into negotiations. I've made it clear that what I'm doing is I'm discussing with, uh, relevant officers at the Borough Council who are involved with, um, this project. What different options might be acceptable to the board, what things the board might deem uh, necessary, things that the board feel that, that the town council could contribute. They are, that, that is what I'm discussing with them. I have already made it clear that I will not be removing anything, uh, that comes up at those meetings from my, um, proposals when I bring them in November. It is my job to represent the town council on that board. That is what I am doing by ensuring that messages from the board, that the opinion of the board on this matter get back to the town council. And I, I would also say that I have invited the clerk to come along to that negotiation already. Um, sorry, I'll correct myself there, not negotiation, to the discussion already. Um, and I have invited Theresa Needham. I've yet to hear from them whether they're available to do so. But as I've said, it will not be a negotiation. It will be merely a discussion to ascertain what the board might need from the town council. Um, and whether any of the options that have been discussed here, or whether any other options, um, that may come up, uh, should be presented, it should, will be presented to, to the town council going forward. I am not negotiating anything.
Thank you. And it's, I'm getting lost with all these hands popping up everywhere now. Has councillor Patterson got, is, is your hand up for something or is that from before? I'm not sure.
Sorry, it was from before.
No, that's okay. It's not a problem. And councillor Needham, is yours the same? Is it up for something or is that from before?
No, I've got a, I've got another proposal thing, type thing.
Okay, because then we, we obviously we've got a proposal from Simon as well, haven't we? So if you want to do your bit and then we'll take it back to the town clerk.
I'm just a little bit concerned at this point, because he's quite clear where this is going. Um, and it has already been pointed out this evening that, um, part, section 31 of our standing orders, that a decision, whether affirmative or negative, shall not be reconsidered within six months. So if we do want the clerk to enter into negotiations, I'm thinking it might be better if councillor Hallam does withdraw this. I'm happy to work with him on a note, motion at another time to bring forward, to actually get into this negotiation, because I think it's important that we take part in that. But at the moment, I really do think it would be wise to, to withdraw and actually, um, and, and rewrite this properly when we've got a bit more time, rather than doing ad hoc amendments in this situation. That's all I was going to say. Thank you.
And that's appreciated. Thank you. Councillor Hallam, do you want to answer, answer what councillor Needham's just said?
Yeah, I mean, obviously I would, uh, I would like very much for this council to, um, there's nothing on here that I didn't, that I didn't deem to be important enough to, to put in front of the council. Uh, so, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to myself withdraw the, the motion. Uh, however, the, the next thing that needs to be resolved is, um, councillor Frost's proposal to push back. Um, so, uh, so that seems like the most, the most sensible, uh, option at this stage. Um, that's, that, that's all I can really say on it. Uh, if, if council aren't minded to, um, to accept that, that motion to push back and want to, to vote this down and, and thereby essentially draw a line under the whole thing, then, um, council's minded to do that. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's councillor, um, Frost has, has put a motion forward, counts. Um, sorry, I can't remember who, who it was. Another councillor did second that. Um, I can't remember who it was, sorry. So if the town clerk wants to take a, a vote on that, and are you all clear what we're voting? Did, did Simon, do you want to repeat what your motion was?
Tickle one sec. Oh, blummy thing. Just give me a second.
No, you're all right. Unless the town clerk can remember it.
There we go. It's working now.
Oh, here it is.
I was just trying to find it in my notes, Chair.
Sorry, I was going to say if Tim says that he would like us to basically vote on it and you know, go which way it wants to go, rather than us taking it out. I mean, I'm prepared to do that if he wants to us to vote yes or no on it.
Points of clarification.
Yeah, sure.
Can I, can I clarify?
Yeah, yeah, push it on.
I'm not withdrawing the motion, right? Because I think this is important. Um, however, I do support the, the concept at least of keeping it on the table, uh, with your motion to, to push back. Um, councillor Frost, that's, that's where I was coming from. So, you know, if, if however, council wants to, wants to vote down your motion to push back and just, and just kill the, well, the way it seems at the moment, just kill this dead forever, then, um, you know, that's council's decision. Obviously, I would much rather, and some of us here would much rather, that this was resolved in favour, for favour, so that negotiations could start before it's too late.
Okay, so, so we're, we're voting on the motion that, um,
Basically take it back, reword it, bring it back after, um, Ella has brought back the reports that she's bringing in November. So we can see all the information.
So, so what, what is the wording of your motion, councillor Frost, so we know what we're voting on?
The mo, the wording of the motion is as follows, that councillor Hallam remove or push back the, um, motion until we, uh, so we can work on, uh, the motion with the amendments that have been put on. Um, after, for, after November. Is that about as clear as mud?
It is, but I'm just, I'm just looking in the comments and councillor Carr, and I, I know he's just put a comment in, so I'm reading it and I'll ask the town clerk for clarification. It says only what, only the proposer, which would be councillor Hallam and the second can withdraw a motion. Any other way would be undemocratic. Obviously, we don't want to do anything that's wrong.
First, first off, uh, may I, Mr Mayor, please?
Yeah, you can.
Um, thanks. Um, I, obviously that's, um, that's just a comment from, for the purposes of this council and member of the public. And, uh, so I don't think it should hold any weight. Uh, that's, you know, I've been, uh, we're trying to uphold proper process earlier and, and I think
So we're, we're voting on what Simon said then?
Can I, can I just confirm? Because the, the motion, what Si, what Si said, um, as far as I understand it within standing orders, is only, um, a motion to, to push back, which is allowable. Putting additional conditions over and above it, I think is unnecessary at this stage. But a motion to push back is perfectly, is perfectly reasonable. And that's, and, and, you know, maybe the town clerk would like to, you know, confirm that, but I think that's all that can be done.
Yeah. Okay, Sabrina?
Uh, sorry, that means I'm just trying to read everything. So we're going all over the place at the moment. Just bear with me a second.
I'm, I'm just mindful of the time as well on here, because I've heard in, you know, if the meeting goes on too long, we don't want to get cut off, do we? That's not going to happen, is it?
So, I mean, a motion, an amendment can be proposed to any motion and it can be anything, so long as it's not negating the motion. So, um, if we want to amend the words, then we can do that, provided it doesn't negate the effect. If we want to move deferral, that's another option, um, which is what Simon has started with. Um, or as, as Tim has said, we can just go to, if, if Simon and Jan are happy to withdraw that, uh, proposal, then we could vote on the actual item itself. Um, if Tim wants to withdraw it for the time being and come back at a later date, that's another option that we can look at as well. So there, there's many things that we can go through.
So the first question is then, Tim, did you want to withdraw it?
No, I've already pushed it back once. Um, so
No, that's no problem. So that answers that one. So the second question is, councillor Frost, you want to vote that we push it back?
Looking at this and listening to what Tim says, I think we just need to vote on it, whether it stays or it goes. So I'm during my motion, my motion, my motion.
Okay, so we're going back, we're going back
To the original, yeah.
Okay, so is, is Sabrina, is that okay?
Yeah, so now we're, we're voting on, um, the original motion as it is on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll do that then. So, thank you.
Can I then, because Theresa did have some, um, some amendments that she, that she proposed. So now that, now that the motion to push back has been, have been withdrawn, I think it's, I think it's only fair to discuss those, um, those amendments, which incidentally, I'm very happy to accept.
Okay, so it's voting on it as it is with the amendments that was, um, proposed by Theresa and, and obviously agreed by Tim. And I, I, I did ask the question, I don't know, we're not going to get cut off or anything after we, Sabrina, with it being going on for like four hours nearly. I just want to make sure we're not.
Yeah, no, it's just the recording that gets split up. That's all. So we'll be okay. That'll be great.
Yeah, you can say that. I'm not, because I don't want to end up as a ringtone. Um, okay, so we're voting on that. So if Sabrina will call the names out and then you're all voting for, against or obviously abstaining. So thank you.
So just to clarify, Chair, the, um, the amendments were that the, um, well, this is the thing. So we need to vote on the amendments first, um, and then we vote on the motion. So Theresa has proposed, um, that the, the item I be amended. Um, so that the, uh, the wording at the end is changed from, uh, with the aim, uh, delete all the rest of what's on uh, delete all the rest of what's on there. And it says, uh, with the aim of putting a stake and share in the new community facility. Um, and then, uh, Tim amended it himself anyway, so we'll kind of take that with it as well. The second item was, um, the, uh, a, a progress update shall be presented to the next meeting. Um, I'm trying to think what the words were now, I'm trying to find them in my notes.
I think I made them up on the spot, but I can, I can probably regurgitate them. The, that, um, a report shall be presented to the next meeting of this council detailing the, um, progress of negotiations.
Thank you.
Right, so that's what we're voting for, everybody. Um, so if I can have a for, against or abstain, councillor Boffinger.
And four.
Oh, I've, sorry, can you say that again? Because I've cut off for a moment there. Councillor Boffinger.
Against.
Against, thank you. Uh, councillor Brown.
Four.
Uh, councillor Derby.
Against.
Councillor Epton.
Against.
Councillor Frost.
Against.
Councillor Gould.
Against.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Uh, Jess has gone. Councillor Hallam, Tim Hallam.
Four.
Uh, councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Against.
Councillor Kearney.
Against.
Councillor McRae.
I need to abstain on that because I'm an, I'm an actual member of the Town Deal Executive Board, so I don't feel, feel it to be right me voting on that. So I've got to abstain, I'm afraid.
Councillor McGrath.
Uh, well, uh, Sabrina, town clerk, as I've joined it halfway through and they might think, they might think there's some conspiracy, this is me speaking honest, because you know I'm honest. I'll, I don't, first of all, I'll ask you, can I vote? Is it right that I do vote? But if I do, if I am allowed to vote, I'll abstain.
Uh, you can vote. You have joined the meeting. You have listened to most of what's been said, so there's no reason why you can't vote. So would you like to abstain?
Uh, no, if that's the case, then against.
Okay. Uh, councillor Needham. Abstain. Thank you. And councillor Patterson.
Um, I'm against.
Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that we were clear on what we were doing there because we were voting on whether to put those amendments to the original motion. So we voted against doing that, which means we're left with the substantive motion, which is the original, which we will then need to vote on. Are we, are we happy that we were clear that's what we were doing?
Yeah, I wasn't clear with that, sorry, because I accepted the amendments as the proposer of the motion. So does that not automatically make it substantive?
Uh, no, because the motion, um, needs to be voted on. You can't just move an amendment without that, that you, it was all right for you to amend it yourself in the sense that you'd written it, but then there was amendments from Theresa that came through.
Right, okay, that's a slightly different approach to what I'm, to what I'm familiar with. Okay, fair enough.
So.
Now we're voting on it as it's written on the agenda, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay, we got there in the end.
Yeah, so, so if we can go again then, so the, the current motion then, as it's written on the agenda, if you are for, against or abstain, please. Councillor Boffinger.
Against.
Councillor Brown.
I'm sure people weren't quite up to what we were voting for last time, but that's forced my hand now because I'd have preferred the amendments, but I'll, I'll, I'll go for four then.
Councillor Derby.
Against.
Councillor Epton.
Against.
Councillor Frost.
Against.
Councillor Gould.
Against.
Councillor Grindel.
Four.
Councillor Tim Hallam.
Four.
Councillor Hallam Davis.
Four.
Councillor Hawkins.
Against.
Councillor Kearney.
Against.
Councillor McRae.
Again, I need to abstain because I'm a member of the executive board.
Councillor McGrath.
Against.
Councillor Needham.
Against.
Councillor Patterson.
Against.
Thank you. Uh, so that's, the motion's defeated. Um, four votes for, 10 against, one up in contention.
Thank you, everybody, for that. That was a healthy debate. Hope it kept you all awake for the next thing. So item 16 on the agenda is exclusion of press and public, Public Bodies' Admission to Meetings Act 1960. And it is recommended that item, it's actually item 17.
It's actually 17.
Seventeen reconsidered after a resolution in the following terms has been passed, excluding the press and public. And we do need to take a vote on that. I'm sure we're all right doing it by exception. Is anybody, um, against that? And has anyone objected? Okay, so that motion's passed. If, if we take a moment or two to let the press and public or basically anyone that's not a Stapleford councillor, I think, to, to leave the meeting. And then if the town clerk can tell us when that's happened, then we can move on to item 17.